Well, I will call our work session to order. I don't believe we need a row call, everybody is here. I thought we would first get started. Any comments, anything from board members at this time? Just thought we would open any.
Our audio folks just reminded us to speak directly into the mic and the closer the better.
Okay.
You share your own judgment on that.
Sounds like a, sounds like a plan. If there's no opening comments initially, I just thought I would get us quickly started. Yes, oh yes, sorry Chris, I'm sorry.
No problem, just wanted to read a quick statement. I received a copy of a letter from a resident who believes the value of homes and the education of students currently in the Colonial Forge High School. Attendance area will be negatively impacted by the school board's decision to redistrict the attendance area. This resident stated further that because my family lives in a neighborhood currently zoned for Forge and I have children, this resident does not believe that I can be impartial in participating in the school board's consideration of the redistricting of Forge. Finally, this person asked if I recuse myself and my vote to maintain an appearance of fairness. I respectfully decline to recuse myself from the board's consideration of the Forge redistricting. Of course, no one can predict at this time how school board will ultimately decide to redistrict the attendance area. However, I categorically reject the assumption that property values and the education of students will be negatively impacted by the redistricting of Colonial Forge. In addition, the Virginia State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act does not bar me from participating in the board's consideration of the redistricting. I do not have a personal interest in a transaction that is the redistricting of Forge attendance area. Despite the views of this individual who requested my recusal, neither my family know my property well, quote, "realize a reasonably foreseeable direct or indirect benefit or detriment as a result of the redistricting." Even if I had a personal interest in the redistricting, which I do not, the act would still permit me to participate in the board's deliberations and action if the redistricting will impact more than three persons, which clearly it will, and if I make the following disclosures. Number one, the school board is considering the redistricting of Colonial Forge attendance area. Number two, I own a home and have school-aged children who live in the attendance area. And number three, I am a member of the group of homeowners and parents of school-aged children that may be affected by the redistricting. And four, I'm able to participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest. I would ask the clerk to file the statement with the minutes of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. I believe that the rest of your board, Ms. Egan's comments the other evening, I believe, is echoed by your fellow board members, that we appointed you for a reason, we felt you were the best candidate, and we're glad to have you on board. That being said, I thought we would move on. Not that we really need a huge introduction, but I thought I would give a few opening remarks on the why are we here. Based on our out-of-capacity chart, the rainbow chart as we call it, just based on our predictions and projections, the one thing that's important for all of us to realize, and Mr. Haran, correct me if I'm wrong, this was done as of development and things that were on the books as of July 1 of 2016. These projections are based on, so, anything that comes before or after this will alter these numbers. However, you have to start somewhere with projections, and we went with our fiscal year. So according to this, in the school year 2020 to 2021, we will go to at least a 91% attendance throughout our high schools at that time. There are, you know, further projections, but again, that assumes not one more house than we have predicted will, will be brought in here. As we all remember, there was an article in our newspaper regarding the overcrowding at Colonial Forge that talked about inaccurately, in my opinion, the loss of books, there weren't enough chairs, things like that. However, that being said, I do believe that there is a compromise potentially or upcoming in our ability to offer the many classes that we would like to offer at our schools, and Colonial Forge being one of them. So, I would like to say, I believe that this is something we need to examine and address, and I believe that we need to move forward getting this information in the best interest of our students, not just at Colonial Forge, but elsewhere. We have some undercapacity in schools, and remember, staff follows where our kids are. This impacts all of our schools when we have overcrowding in one, because we want to make sure that we have all the right resources in all the right schools for our students because we offer such a great education in Stafford County. With that, I will actually turn it maybe to Dr. Benson to sort of say, this is a really unique way that we are able to engage. It appears in this process, it's going to be very hands-on, we will be able to use our maps, but I'm going to have to turn to the experts on how to use the technology.
So just a note, you know, in addition to broadcasting out into chambers, we're also streaming it on the web, and it's on channel 18 of cable, so we have lots of folks have access to this. And as soon as we get the closed captioning done, which will probably be Wednesday next week, we'll post it on the, on the web as well. Before we talk about the application that we've put together to assist the board in looking at some possible options, and I just want to run through what you have sitting in front of you. There's a copy of our policy related to school attendance areas and the items that the board may take into consideration in determining any adjustments in those attendance zones. We also have the Colonial Forge 2021 student numbers with APUs by subdivision. You have our stoplight chart for all five of our high schools. You have a map that has the Colonial Forge area enlarged, and then you have a summary chart from our community input meeting that was held at Colonial Forge. So, what's a little bit different about this evening is when compared to other times that we've redistricted, at this point in the process, is that we don't have options to present to the board. We have a tool that will allow the board to consider multiple options by deciding perhaps what APUs or, in some cases, portions of APUs you might want to move, either to, you know, could be to, to, to North or to Mountain View, or there were some other conversations that came up as a part of our input sessions and town halls. So, if you notice, we have two screens for the, for the board to look at. One has, excuse me, has all of our APUs, some of the APUs have been divided, we have a description of subdivisions that are included in there, we have the number of students that we project to come out of them in 2021, and then right now, they're all assigned to Colonial Forge, okay, in every one of the options. So, we're starting with every one of the options being kind of a baseline. The board can discuss what APUs or portions thereof you may be interested in moving, we can adjust them in the option sets, and then on our other screen, you'll be able to see what the change in enrollment is across the high schools, and the colors will adjust based upon whether or not we're below 90% or above to some, some degree. So you'll be able to do it on the fly, we won't have to add and subtract, and it'll all be there for you, and we can save, I think we planned for as many as, how many options this evening?
We put in, we dummy loaded 10.
Okay, so there are 10 slots for the board to, to, to try to adjust, and then we'll retain all of them, and we will produce maps after the fact for, for each one of the options. So that's not something that we can do on the fly, but the board will be able to do this on the fly. So for example, if for some reason the board wanted to see England Run North Townhomes moved to, I'm just going to pick someplace, Mountain View, you would suggest that, we would go up into option set one, where it says England Run North Townhomes, and we would change that to Mountain View High School, and those totals on the front screen would reflect that adjustment. So Forge would be reduced and Mountain View would be increased, and you can see then what capacity we'll be at in 2021. And many thanks to Nicole Stewart, who put this together over the weekend essentially for us to be able to do this.
Before we have the, it appears we've had the tool explained, I was just going to invite the board to pull out our board policy, our 1403. Couple of things to note, and I am certainly open for others chiming in who have been through this process potentially more times than I have. There is a list of factors there. There is probably no way we can meet all 14 with them, but these are things that we, that by policy, we are to keep in mind in our, in our deliberations. I wanted to invite my colleagues tonight, after, after Tuesday night when we were discussing the policy regarding transfers, I'd like the board to consider, and I have not really run this completely through staff, but I'm beginning to wonder if whether we might consider a sibling policy and allowing siblings to possibly attend the school that their sibling, their older sibling attended until such time as high school number six is built. Because at that time, I can't bind a future board, but I believe at the time that we open a high school six, we will look at the whole county and move people around, that grandfathering at that time may be less appropriate. I am not pushing for that this evening, but it is something I think we can think about. I do realize that that would result in additional students remaining at their school, so I know that that, but I do believe that is something, I know I have heard in emails as well as we had, I know, I know one speaker spoke to it, potentially others. My thought would be, since we discussed that policy that night of saying, there would be some kind of, my thought would be the time that we would conclude that would be potentially when we would open high school six. So I just offer that before we get started as something to think about. Are there any other general, either comments or questions before we dive in to moving back people?
Commander Chair, just quickly, you know, being the newest one here, the past few weeks watching folks come up and talk, first time I've ever done this, and it was pretty compelling. And we're all residents in this area, and we have children, so I think we can all say that we understand where these folks are coming from. So as we move forward, I would just ask the board, let's avoid making perfect the enemy of the good here, and when we look at everything, I would encourage folks to, if there was a plan that is good but not perfect, let's think about these families and these, and these kids, and, and let's not be so set on numbers that we just kind of lose sight of that. So I mean, the Garrisonville District is, I get it, there's a lot of potential areas within this district that, that could be looked at in these maps, so I just move ahead forward, I will be advocating for that, is that we just try to do that. So, and the other thing I just wanted to mention really quickly, and I was just looking at the maps last night, I've talked to a lot of folks from Liberty Knowles, which is a small little area that, I know we've all heard this, which is literally, as a gentleman said, you can throw a football.
To Walking Dead.
At Colonial Forge, and that is part of APU 163, which does expand northward. So, just for folks watching on TV, I don't want them to have heart palpitations every time we say APU 163, because it includes other areas up north, so I just wanted to kind of state that, if we could just, in that one area, if we can be specific when we do talk, because they literally are next door. And, so, just wanted to throw a shout out to those folks, because they have been very vocal and they're, they're obviously concerned.
Madam Chair. And I agree. What I remember from the last time is that some mistakes were made because emotions got, got brought into it. I'm hoping that we can rely more on common sense and not emotion. We have an opportunity to do this correctly this time, let's get it done.
Ms. Healy. I'd like to ask Dr. Benson or staff how the goal was established, specifically the number 400, which, I assume there's a basis for that, but, but also the distinction between Mountain View and, and North. Because looking at these numbers, it appears to me that Mountain View has at least as much capacity now and in the future as North does, but there's a significantly higher number of students being set as the goal to be moved. And I, I have, at least at the, the public hearing that, that I went to, that I had, made it clear that the goal was, you know, presented to the school board, but it was not a goal that was established by this board. So if we could just get some background on that.
I second that, that was one of my questions written down, and just, and to remind the public, you know, what were the numbers that we first established, I think?
Certainly, and the board certainly has some flexibility as to where you make that differentiation in the number of kids that are going, may potentially go to Mountain View and to, to North. It basically was a place to get started, right, that we set some parameters for the community input session, that we had a target of about 400 students, and at the, at the time, there was a thinking that that might be an appropriate split, that might be different today, and so, if it looks like we have more capacity at Mountain View, the board certainly could look at adjusting APUs that would move to Mountain View and provide the same amount of relief to Forge, and then potentially consider a smaller number of students going to North.
And, Madam Chairman, I have a follow-up question to that. With respect to these numbers, I know that schools have transfer students for, you know, busing, for example, Mountain View buses to North for Governor's School. There are programs at North that, I mean, that students from all over bus to the STAT program, the biomedical engineering, you know, is some examples. You know, other schools have busing programs. Have we taken into consideration the numbers of students going in, into a school, as well as out of a school, in looking at these capacities? I know that they don't count against ADM, and I'm not suggesting they do, but if, for example, we have 200 students coming into a school for half a day, that's taking up, you know, some of the capacity that may not be reflected if they're not included, you know, in these numbers. So it's something I want to consider, because as Mrs. Egan said, we want to do it right.
Sure.
And we need to take into consideration what the impact will be on the school, particularly if we're looking at bringing in a number that's going to put it fairly close to capacity.
We can, we could certainly get that current state information for the board. That might be a little bit harder to project out for 2021, but it would give the board some indication of what, what that looks like right now.
Right. I'd be satisfied with today's numbers, recognizing that we can't predict for the future, but at least if we know, you know, what, if, if there's a wash, I mean, if the same amount coming in is going out, then that's okay, but if it's a significantly higher number coming in versus going out, then that could impact the capacity.
I think Mr. Nichols has some current information, but he'll have to get close to a microphone so that everybody can hear.
You can use mine, Mr. Nichols.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody's willing to give up their seat.
Yes, currently at North Stafford High School, they have 94 students that leave on a daily basis to travel to other schools, and on a daily basis, they have approximately 204 students that come into North Stafford. So you have 110 students each day in addition to what was there.
What about Mountain View High School?
I did not have all of Mountain View's numbers at this time. I know that North Stafford sends over 79. Their numbers would not be as high because they don't have as many CTE programs.
CTE programs.
And Forge, Mr. Nichols?
Forge has a travel program, so their numbers would not be as high either.
Thank you.
So we don't know how many leave Mountain View, but we can estimate about 79 come to?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, that, and, and Dr. Benson, that, that brings up another point with the numbers that I had concerns with also. I think it was, the initial number was, correct me if I'm wrong, was it 275 and 125? 275 to North Stafford and 125 to Mountain View? And so, in the redistricting effort, and this is the second full board work session, and, correct me if I'm wrong on that, you all had your town halls, but this, this is the second board work session. The first board work session, we brought into the mix about closing the Commonwealth Governor's School site at, at Colonial Forge to free up classroom space, so that maybe we wouldn't have to redistrict people, I'm not sure. And I thought we had decided that we were going to, since we have a current program review going on, hopefully with IB as well, and Governor's School, that we were going to put that on the table, but I guess last night against, in the Finance and Budget Committee, it came back up under the redistricting efforts, that a board member here must have put in that, you know, we are looking at options to close the Commonwealth Governor's School at Colonial Forge site, and that is an ongoing thing, if I'm not mistaken, to come up with some courses of action, some criteria for that, but that would, and one of the primary options, from what I understand, is, well, you can either go to South Stafford with it, or you can either go to North Stafford with it. So currently, we have almost the same amount of seats opened up between, based on the current capacities of both our high schools, at 391 and 421. 421 seats are open at Mountain View High School, and 391 seats are open, maybe I have that backwards, open at, at North Stafford High School and Mountain View High School. Closing the Governor's School site would actually add 60 kids to North Stafford High School as well, so that was also a concern that Mrs. Healy brought up about, so why did, why did we say that, so was it 275 inclusive of the 60 possible kids?
No.
I don't, I don't believe it was. I just wanted to make sure, no, so I get, I'm getting a, I'm getting a no, okay. So, I mean, so really, that would be the 275 projected kids to North Stafford High School, plus the 60 kids, that would be there all day, because remember, the Governor's School is a four, four-year program unlike IB, which is only 11th and 12th, and so you have the, well, it's half-day, but.
Every day.
Every day, but it's, it's 9th and 10th though in the morning.
Yeah.
And 11th and 12th go in the afternoon, so in fact, there's 120 possible students up there, only 60 though, throughout the day would be there and they wouldn't leave. So, that, I guess that's, that's my issue that I think we have a, have a, need to have a discussion about.
So, Mr. Magoski, I would just reiterate my response, a portion of my response to Ms. Healy, and that is that the board certainly could look at adjusting those numbers across the two, those two high schools if that is of interest.
Well, Madam Chairman, may I?
Yes, yeah.
I, I think it's important to look at these travel students, because if the travel students are there, and if it's a half, I'm, put the Governor's School aside, because I think that's a separate issue, and that may have additional factors that need to be, be looked at.
But there's still 60, 60 traveling.
Right, right.
If we move it, right.
But of, of the travel students coming in, it sounds as though there's at least 100 additional students in North Stafford today that are not counted in the, the enrollment, in the ADM. So it would not appear to me that there would be this, the same amount of capacity there for adding new students if you don't count these students that are there. I mean, it's, it's a complicated matter because, you know, we have the ADM and the enrollment, but in reality, we have, you know, a plus 100 students coming in. We have 100, and I'm just rounding these off, but 100 going out and 200 coming in, that means we have 100 extra students. So I don't want to be making a decision, you know, to meet a capacity level that doesn't count these 100 students in, you know, doesn't factor them in, because the programs at North are not going away. I mean, these are popular programs that the students are coming in, we're busing them in from, you know, a variety of schools, you know, you know, a small part of it is the, the Governor's School coming in from, from Mountain View, but there's a, there's a whole slew of other programs that they're coming in for. So that's, that's 100 students that, you know, aren't showing up here, yet we're going to be making a decision about how many we're going to put in the school.
Junior and the seniors are half-day.
Mr. Haran's?
To Dwayne's point, yeah, the Finance and Budget Committee had an agenda item regarding the cost for redistricting, and part of that was included if we were to move a program like CGS out of there. And for everyone's notice, I asked Roberta to send out an email to all of you from, you can help me with her last name.
Vander Pluken?
Mary, the director of CGS program?
Yes, Mary Kay.
Yeah. That she gave us some estimates on the cost, just so FYI, and what it would cost if we were to decide to move a CGS site.
So, yeah, no, thanks, Mr. Haran. So I mean, I, I mean, I brought this up because it was brought up as a redistricting issue for costs, so that, that's why I'm specifically talking about the Commonwealth Governor's School program possibly leaving Colonial Forge. And, and in that, there are 60 students all day long, not, not half-day, possibly 60 students all day long that will be in that school. So you have your, you have your freshmen and your sophomores in the morning, and then you have your juniors and your seniors in the afternoon, so.
So, to me, the one thing that I know we, we focus on a lot with our high schools is the core services. Do the traveling students take their lunches at the school that they travel to? Like, are they, not burdening, that's not the right word, but are they participating in those activities? Because I know the lunch and the core is, is a challenge for us. Do they eat lunch there, basically?
They are eating at the travel site.
They are eating at the travel site? Okay.
They leave at 10:30, 10:40, which is just before the first lunch.
And more importantly, they're in the classrooms.
Well, definitely.
They're in the classrooms and there are students in the school, and I think it would be not responsible not to consider them when we're looking at the number of students in the school. And this is not just North, this is across the board. I think we need to consider that when we're saying, how many students can this school hold? And, and Mr. Rand, you know, he's, he's given us the numbers and nobody's, you know, challenging or has any reason to challenge the capacity numbers.
Right.
But what I'm saying is, you know, how are we counting the students there? And it seems that we are not counting a perhaps significant number, at least where North is concerned. And I think it's only prudent to take all these factors into consideration when we're deciding, you know, how many students do, do we want to have there, you know, that the school can, can, you know, handle.
It seems like we need a plus and minus, though, because we don't know how many leave and.
We know the net for North.
Right, that's right.
The net is, Mr. Nichols is.
110 additions.
110.
Okay.
So that's a fairly easy adjustment for us, us to make. It may reduce then the number of students that you might want to consider moving to North by that amount.
And then, and then just. Just to make sure that it's on our radar about if the Governor's School, if the board decides to move the Governor's School out of Colonial Forge, then that would be another 60.
Madam Chair, can I?
Yeah.
If we're through on this. One more thing, if we can just, you know, we're trying to find every possible way, right? And this is kind of what we're here for, which is, which is good. I've heard from several families about residency requirements, that a student can show residency freshman year, and then they're not required to show residency again. So there's possibility that the family moves and that student continues to go when they're not in that district, and we have no way of knowing. One, I'm asking, is this accurate? And two, if that is, then is that something we can look at as possible numbers?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Conley, look at as possible?
As possible, as possible numbers that we can take into consideration as ways of, of saving other kids from having to relocate. As I go into this process, I just keep coming back to the minimal disruption possible.
So there's speculation that we have students in a school that are no longer in the attendance zone.
Correct.
That, that we have not.
And there's no proof of residency at the beginning of each year.
So, Mr. Nichols, when, when a student enrolls at the high school level, they provide some.
Proof of residency.
Proof of residency, and is there a check after that?
We usually do not follow up. Usually where we find that is to return mail, and then we follow up at that point and find out where they're living.
So there is.
And we do a yearly checkup. We ask, you know, they, they, they update their information each year. We do take that in, we change it in the system, and our registers do check. Now, when they're putting it in, they see that somebody's out of the zone for that school, they bring. school, they bring it to our attention, and we break up the family.
So it is possible, though, that we may move children, high school kids, without checking other students to make sure they live in that district? I mean, we're relying on either them being honest or return mail?
We don't verify every, we don't go out and check if they're living in that home. We take it...
Or, but you, but you don't require, as they come to school, as they fill out all the paperwork in the beginning of the year?
On an annual basis, is what you're asking, Mr. Conley?
Right. So on an annual basis, as they're filling out all the paperwork and turning everything in for the year, we're not asking for a utility bill or something to show that they still live there?
We don't. But if that's, if something of interest to the board, I mean, we certainly could look at adopting a policy to do that.
Let's look at cost first. To do 28,000 students every year to check where they live is ridiculous.
Well, I wouldn't say check where they live. I would say, you know, I mean, every, every, I mean, my daughter had to do it. You, you submit all kinds of paperwork with it. Could they submit something just showing proof of residence?
We can't give them return federal aid forms.
Right. We don't have the manpower for it.
I get it. But it'd be, come very burdensome to the division as a whole, I think, because what are we gonna do? Are we gonna track down those that don't return? If we do, we better carry a green form along with it as well.
Get those federal dollars.
I definitely get it, but it is a challenge. And ever since I've been on the board, I've, I've received emails and phone calls from folks that have been really athletes wanting to transfer into Forge.
Right, right.
And every request I've had, I've asked these guys, can you track this one down? And they've been very good about verifying addresses. And not a single one has come back as, yeah, he's not, he doesn't live in the district. Now, you know, do we want to look at investing more money, more time and energy into being more aggressive about the research that they're able to do on a student when it's reported that they don't live in the district? You know, I think you guys typically verify the address that's on record, and when it was verified, last verified, and how, by utility bill, et cetera. Do we want to invest, you know, make an investment where we're paying somebody, go out there and knock on the door, and, hey, is Johnny here? Does Johnny live here?
Yeah. And I would advocate for a census approach, but, you know, if it is possible to submit documentation. I, I'm raising it because I've had folks talk me about it. So I just feel the need to raise it.
I think we all have. And it's about the concerns.
So, I mean, I mean, just real, very quickly, and then I guess we'll move on. But, you know, that, that's something that could be power down, unfortunately, to the hard-working administrative assistants in the schools. Every year, you bring a power bill, or what have you, and say, yeah, I'm still living at 1313 Mockenbird Lane, and here, here it is. And they check that off, and then they ask for your green form for federal support money. But as far as sending investigators out from the division, I don't think that's the reality.
No.
Unfortunately...
28,000 students, we don't...
Unfortunately, for elementary, we don't even have 12-month secretary, administrative support. But Ms. Healy and I will not go there. Most people know where we would go with that, and Mrs. Cale is giving us the...
Even with that, I don't think we'd get there.
I don't either. And so I agree, it's a, but I think the main thing we can do is encourage the public. I've gotten some emails, and they, there's allegations that people from Richmond are here everywhere. And I write back, and I say, please bring me that information. I will tell you the, most of the emails go silent after that. I, I don't want to, it's easy to say things, but then when asked, okay, but we will investigate it. I have to tell you, many times, it goes very silent. It's very, the legends live on. And I'm not saying there have never been any violations. But I think it's on us to then say, please bring us that information for investigation. Because I do know Mrs. Cale and Mr. Nichols and their team will, will look into it.
Yeah. I'm just, I mean, I'm just glad that people are taking this serious. I mean, when, when we're looking at moving families in subdivisions of 60, 70 people, clearly, those numbers mean something. And so if we could find these numbers other ways, clearly that's something we look at. So I just wanted to raise that. So thank you.
Well, and I think in that vein, something that, and Mr. Conley, you spoke to it, one of the things about Policy 1403 that I think goes a little bit without saying, and Ms. Healy, I hate to put you on the spot on this, but I think it's something you and I have talked about at length, is moving as few students as possible is, I believe, one of the things that we need to, to always examine. I will be upfront here, Ms. Healy, you can make whatever comments you like. I am not particularly a fan of moving students into a school to move others out to accommodate those. If you move 150 in, but you have to move 150 out just to make it better, that's moving 300 students. To the extent possible, I just want to advise the board, that is not something I particularly favor. I'm not saying we certainly can't look at it. But if we are talking about the disruption that, you know, this can cause, to the extent we can do direct moves, I do believe it's in the better interest because we move less kids. However, certainly the will of the Board, but Ms. Healy, I don't know if you want to comment on that, but it's, it seems like something you and I have spoken...
I, I agree. And anyone that moves is going to be a disruption.
And to move twice.
To move twice makes no sense to me. I mean, if the goal is to reduce the population at Forge and increase the population, you know, at this point, we're talking about two other schools. There were some suggestions that came up at the community meeting about some maybe tweaks to, with Brookpoint and Stafford. I don't know if that's going to be feasible. But I don't want to do any unnecessary.
Well, in that vein, do we want to start, start seeing how the process works? Ms. Healy did actually raise one that was not sort of part of our, of what we went in looking at. There was a suggestion, I'm sure you all, if you're looking at your chart regarding the community meeting, there was a suggestion about APUs, I believe, and Ms. Egan and Ms. Decatur. I'm sorry to start there, but let's start with, with something that we can, it was APU 183 and 179, because they border the Brookpoint High School attendance zone. I was wondering if, if we could do this as a start to see, Mr. Hiran, if you could show us how, if we were to move those, I believe the suggestion was to Brookpoint, which was not one that we had really heard of, but it was just...
Could you just catch me up to speed real quick, if you don't mind? Is, are these specific APUs, the one that you guys have discussed, that kind of get moved back and forth frequently?
Yes. And I'm not saying we're suggesting that this is a good suggestion. It's one that came out of the community meeting, and it sort of goes to what we were just talking about. Are we directly moving to move in? But it was to also see how the chart works.
Right. And that's, and that's, I'm sorry. No, and that's, and that's fine. But I do want, that's a very good point that you bring up. Because if you look at the proximity on the map of where it is, it's, it's the most logical, lowest hanging fruit that people go to. The prior boards have, have looked at. So I'm, I'm a little hesitant on that. Not to mention, if you look at your chart here...
Right.
2019, we're in the yellow.
Right.
And I've received some information today on some, some more developments that have been approved that are probably not in these projections. So we can, we can see how, yeah, we can see how this works.
And then we can make a quick discussion, and it may, that, fair enough.
Right. And I wasn't suggesting that they be moved...
She wasn't.
No, no, no.
I was just saying that this, these are some comments that were, that came up at the community meeting. And speaking of the community meeting, I think it's important to note that depending on what table you were at, people had different perceptions of what they were able to come up with for recommendations. For example, the, these ones, the, the small part to Brookpoint and the small one to Stafford High School, you know, that when they, reporters came up and gave that as the table recommendation, people said, oh, I didn't know we could do that. That's not, you know, in the guidelines. So I'm not sure that everyone was working with the same set of parameters on what they were able to, to recommend at that point. So these, these were just things that came up. And I think there were lessons learned from that community meeting in terms of the information that was given out, you know, and, and what can be set forth. So just because it came up at the community meeting doesn't mean that it's what everybody would have said, because people didn't even know that they could say something that wasn't, you know, within the box.
Right. I agree with that 100%. And frankly, had I known that that was the case, that, you know, everything was on the table, I certainly would have informed my constituents. The, basically what was put out on the website, and what this board had said was, all right, we've got, we've got an overpopulation problem at Forge that we need to alleviate, and we're a little under capacity at North and, and Mountain View. So nowhere in any of those, you know, online statements that were made, did it discuss Stafford High School or Brookpoint High School. So, you know, had, like you said, lessons learned, I certainly would have notified all my constituents to, to show up at Colonial Forge that night for that town hall.
Well, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I have no issue in order to just get the ball rolling, let's put it in.
I gotta start citing her.
I, you know, and let's start playing with these numbers because we're, we need to get some options.
So, Mr. Hiran, can you show us our technology at work?
So he's changing in this spreadsheet, and you can see the numbers are being reduced at Forge and increasing at Brookpoint. So you can see what happens to the percentage.
That is just APU 179, which is that area right here, in that green swath to the east of Interstate 95.
So that just impacted Brookpoint. And what, we're looking at the 1961?
Yeah. So now we're at 92%? Or is that 99%?
99.
Option step one. Okay. So now, yeah, so now we're over 100%.
Oh, we're in step one.
Okay, wait a minute. I gotta, I'm catching up.
Well, I mean, 179 is like 160 students. It's not, because there's four 179s on the sheet.
And, and we're looking at 2025, is that?
Oh, okay.
No, what are we looking at? 2020, 2021?
2021.
So this is, this is what would be in 2021, not 2018, 2019?
Okay. So that would take Brookpoint to 100.8%, moving those. Ms. Egan, I thought you've had some comment about that. I just figured, let's start with some APU grouping. And I'm sorry, I picked on yours.
Well, that's quite all right. But again, looking at, looking at some of the stuff, the projections that aren't including, included in this, that will push us into a worse scenario than Forge is right now.
So we can go ahead and put that back.
So we can go ahead and put that away.
I guess, I guess moving forward, can we kind of set an agreement as to what, I mean, 100% is not good. But what, what's, what's acceptable? What are we aiming for across the board on this?
90%.
When we, when we plug this in.
Well, I don't think we'll ever get, because if we look at just the projections in 2024, it, it says we will be, I mean, 20, sorry. We are in the 90 to 100% if you aggregate all the high school students. So my thought would be, is we would be trying to be somewhere between 90 and 100% at each of our schools, instead of having one at like 110% and some at 80. Does that make any sense? Like, we're trying to equalize between that 90 and 100% among our schools, as opposed to somebody being 100%, but somebody else is at 91%? Does that make any sense? You know, personally, I don't want to go into one at, you know, somebody at 100%. And that assumes not one house will be built in addition to anything that was approved on July 1st of this past year.
Right. And, and that still keeps Forge at 103%.
Right. And we'd still move probably other things. I think from this exercise was to look at the impact on Brookpoint, I think was the, because if Brookpoint stays, if you do not touch Brookpoint, I gotta do my math really quickly. I'm trying to see what their percentage rate would be.
If you don't touch Brookpoint, at that point, it's at 1961.
It's 1961 divided by 21, 25. Oh.
Yeah, it's right at the top.
This is your control room?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that doesn't change.
Right, okay.
So that keeps you at 92% and available for additional growth that you believe has been either approved or is being approved. Is that correct?
Correct. Scott, did you get any of the information from Jeff Harvey's office recently? There was another new group of numbers that came out of new approvals?
Right.
We have that information, but again, it's not part of our enrollment projection.
That's...
It was approved at Brookpoint, not part of the enrollment projection. So that's been our standard, you know, default when we do the projection.
Right.
We'll catch up when we next do.
Yeah. And that's not going to work, playing catch-up after we've already redistricted.
One year, there could be one. One year, there could be three by the time we have these discussions. It could be four.
Right.
So we can't constantly chase those.
Sure, sure. That's my point exactly. So we're, now we're already at 92%. And let's just say, there's three in here that have not been approved, or they're not included in our projections. That's gonna, now that creates another problem, takes the problem away from Forge, and that adds another problem over at Brookpoint.
Correct.
So we'll be doing this again.
That's what we're trying to, I, I just wanted to start somewhere.
I don't think there's a...
Appetite.
We need to spin our wheels on this one anymore.
No.
We're wasting calories on it.
Right. That's what, but I wanted to start with one that was easy.
Stafford and Brookpoint are saturated.
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't believe that we should move there. So...
You know, in a pinch, we always could, but, you know.
We don't need to be pinching yet, right?
But there's a lot of green at, at North, and there's a lot of green at Mountain View High School.
And that's where we're gonna...
What about 143 to Mountain View High School? Should be only about 42 students.
Well, there's a few 143s.
Yeah.
Is that total? Yeah. Is there a couple more?
Yeah, there's a bunch of them.
What about 142? 142 and 143, if we could look at that.
That would be 118 together.
Yeah. So 143 is all the way at the bottom left-hand corner of the map. It is, it is quite a distance from Mountain View High School, I will admit. However, if we are to move some of the southern, and just in my view is, if we are to move some of those southern districts, the, I think 142, 143 would be candidates where we would push the Mountain View line out a little bit to the east. And some of these other ones that are way down inside the Stafford High School area, I just have a feeling that if, if high school number six comes along, six, even seven years down the road, we're gonna have a, a redistricting of this area down here. You know, those, those 128 and 189 and 188 and 127 and 108, I, I just don't, I mean, they're, they're candidates, of course, if, if the Board so chooses. I'm just trying to, try to keep some logical lines.
Do we, do we know how much additional bus time it would be to go? Because, I mean, from what it looks like here, it looks like Forge, if they move to Mountain View, it's gonna add another possibly 20 minutes to their bus ride.
How about? No, because you're gonna come down Poplar Road, and you're essentially turning right to go to Colonial Forge or left to go to Mountain View.
Here's what I would say, is let's put some of these out. We may have to get the transportation information later. I mean, not later, but when we analyze, when we start to narrow down options. Like I said, you all, next week, may be sitting here and doing this, if we don't kind of come up with some tonight. What we would, what we would have to find is, we will do pros and cons, I think, on however many options we come up with. Some information we, but like I said, if we don't come up with the options tonight, you all will be here next week coming up with them. So I just feel like, let's try and get some started to, to put up there. I would, I would, well, I will do that later. I know that Stafford Lakes has been targeted and asked for many times. I do want to see one up there with that in there.
That's a really, really big...
It's very big. So I, Mr. Hiran, I know you're gonna be very unhappy. Couldn't you take out the 142 and put in 180, just so that we can see what that number...
Did we see what 142, 143 did you?
Where would you send them? There's not enough room for all those students anywhere.
Right. I agree, but I've gotten many emails suggesting that. And I would like to see
what the percentage is.
It's pretty close.
So it's pretty, it's pretty close at Mountain View, but it's really not putting too much of a dent in Colonial Forge.
No.
How many moved out of there? Hundred and?
Was it 100 and, 142 and how much? How many were in 142, I'm sorry?
23.
55, 23, that's 70.
118.
About 115, 120, yeah, because it's 42 and 143.
Well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, just for, for kicks and grins, I'm not convinced about 143, but I will, will offer up some thoughts that I have because of the Margaret Brent Elementary feeder pattern. We have 187, which is Abel Lake, that's right in the center, that group goes to Margaret Brent Elementary School, which sits right in front of Mountain View High School. So I was, you know, I'm, I'm also trying to look at feeder.
It says Rodney Thompson Middle School, AP 187.
Yes, but it's their, their elementary school, they start at Margaret Brent, which is right in front of Mountain View, then they go with about, Margaret Brent kind of goes 40% Thompson, 40% AG Wright, and maybe 20 to Gale. So I'm trying to also think, well, what are some other feeder pattern type things we could, we could consider? It's not a lot of people, but I, but in terms of getting the bus to ride there, we know it can make it. So I would wonder if we want to consider that 187 as part of that.
So look at 142, 143, and 187.
I also believe that 117, the Locklear's Landing that is in the yellow, that sits as a little island in Mountain View, is kind of a, well.
Yeah, they're right there. Was that five?
Right, but it's still.
Yeah.
All right, all right, well.
But you had, you had added 117 and 187, right?
Yes, sir. All those that were identified, they've been moved to Mountain View, so the option one set reflects their numbers.
117.
117.
180.
142, 143.
And 187.
And then 187.
Trish, don't kill me, but can I walk into your district for a minute?
We're going to be doing that all night, so start it off.
We didn't give no trespass letter.
Could you just look at 164?
In conjunction with this?
Yes.
164.
To Mountain View.
And what part?
I believe it's North Augustine, I think it's about 128 kids.
Just Augustine north of the entire.
Just Augustine north, they're pretty wide.
Okay. Because that gives us a number.
So, you're looking at splitting up the subdivision?
Augustine north, oh, okay.
Potentially?
I mean, I want to throw it out there, I know driving through there, it would be, it would be that section up, so.
If you, if you live out the back, you're closer on Mountain View Road, if you live up at the front, you're closer to Courthouse. So, let's throw it in, like I said, tonight is about options and coming up with ideas that we can then pick them apart. So that takes Mountain View to what, 96?
95.44.
Oh, whoops, oh, sorry, we're on option set two, is that correct?
We're on option set one, somehow, two is also reflecting the same thing as one.
Okay, that's fine, I got it now.
Not sure why that's occurring, but.
So you said it takes it to 95, I'm saying 99.
How many students does that add to Mountain View?
95 at Forge, 95 at Mountain View, percentage wise.
Okay.
Can you give us a number of students? I think it's going to be more than.
Well, the 142, 140, I mean, just from my numbers, 142, 143, 187, and 117 equates to about 120. Let's see, 97, yeah, a little bit less than 120.
There was 127 students assigned to Augustine North, so when we moved the, obviously, it went from 144 to 100.
Oh my God, that was a lot.
Well, I think that's too many.
164 is a massive amount of kids.
We didn't move the entire AP, just Augustine north.
Yeah, just Augustine north.
That's 127.
Yes, sir.
In addition to the 142, 143, 187 is about one, what is that? What is that, Roberta?
251.
Did we put 117 in?
We did, we're supposed to put 117 in.
Two what, 251?
This is way harder than I thought.
So Mountain View gets 251, and then Step 11.
116 plus 127.
I do have concerns about splitting the subdivision. I mean, I think, I think that's a significant change from what, you know, we've done in the past. I mean, if there's an absolute necessity, that's one thing, but I think there's a lot of other, you know, options available. So it's, I mean, I don't have any problems putting it up there for discussion, but, you know, I would want to look very hard at something before we start splitting.
Well, we got to start balancing them and throwing out, because otherwise, we're going to be here, and you guys are going to be here next week.
What about 163? Minus Liberty Knowles.
Well, I would think, on this particular option, when you say Mountain View, I think now we have to move to Forge, because, I mean, to North Stafford, because they're at 79.12.
Yeah, I would think, I would think, 163 Stafford minus Liberty Knowles. I promise I'll get out of your district in a minute.
All right, I'll, I have some suggestions.
I promise, I know, it'll be your turn soon.
All right, so I do have, I have significant concerns with, with that one.
Okay. Okay, on that, we've got to get some into North, right?
Can I just, while you guys are thinking about that, I would like to throw out, because this is the first time I've done this, when we go to look at our options, I'd like to know when the last time these neighborhoods were redistricted, kind of like we talked about with that, you know, these, these people over to Brookpoint. I don't want to keep moving these neighborhoods back and forth, so I, I'm interested in knowing if they were redistricted last time, you know.
The most recent would be when Mountain View opened.
2005.
2005.
Okay, oh, okay.
So it's been 10 years for.
All right, that's fine.
And some of these subdivisions weren't there.
A lot of them were not there. Well, let's look at North.
Well, speaking, speaking of.
Was 163, the parts that Chris mentioned, moved to North?
No, I haven't done any.
I haven't heard anything about 163.
Say a lot of things.
I know.
Chris, were you?
Yeah, 163.
All but Liberty Knowles.
All but Liberty Knowles.
Okay, so you'd like us to move as part of option one, out of APU 163, the Liberty Knowles subdivision.
To North Stafford.
No, 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 nothing except for.
Except for, they're the walking.
Except for Liberty Knowles.
Except, okay.
Georgetown east of Paul Oaks is further west, I mean, east from Liberty Knowles, so you would want to move.
Correct.
Right.
To North Stafford. 93% low?
Well, I mean, we're getting there, but.
Or do you mean high?
It's low, because in my opinion, North Stafford is not, does not seem to have a growth neighborhood pouring into it. So, other neighborhoods, other neighborhoods, I mean, other, what Ms. Hagan talked about earlier, Brookpoint, she's already aware of several applications filed or approved in her neighborhood in that, that, excuse me, feed into, at a tendence zone. Colonial Forge, we all know, there's a lot coming. Mountain View, there is some, but probably not a huge amount, but North Stafford, I don't believe there's a huge feeder of new development in there. So I still think we could go higher with North, I don't want to overload North again, but I still think it's a little low.
At the risk of being the bad guy, which is the neighborhood that is currently split between two, isn't there a neighborhood that is currently split between two high schools?
Hmm, I don't know.
A single neighborhood?
Not that I'm aware of. Well, the closest, the closest neighborhood to North Stafford that I see on here, I think we should try, we should see what the Autumn Ridge numbers do to that, I think we have to throw it in.
Yeah, I think that's the one that I heard.
It's split. I was, I was thinking it was between Autumn Ridge and Austin Ridge, just because they sound similar.
Right.
I've been told that they are split.
Hmm.
So would you like me to change Autumn Ridge to North Stafford?
Yes, let's see what that does. Okay, so we don't have it quite, we have, we don't have it quite to 90, and we take Colonial Forge to around 90. I will say, with regard to Colonial Forge, we are, I already am aware of at least one, maybe two, that have already been approved, that we know will be feeding into that probably in the next three years. So, I don't want to take Forge real low, because something people tend to forget is if we take a, a school very low, the staff associated goes with the students, which, you know, is correct, so.
How many came out of 166?
Autumn Ridge, 166, and that's the only part of 166 that was addressing 85 projected students.
And how many did you have for 163?
63, we have 107 out of Stowe, Andy Clay, and Berkshire, and 30 out of Arbor Glen, Marquette State.
So 137?
Yes, ma'am.
So in this, so in this projection, we're including, let me just make sure I get everything right here, so we're including 163 minus Liberty Knowles, we're also including 166, Autumn Ridge.
166 minus Emory Mill, which is Autumn Ridge.
Okay.
And I'd like to see another option without 163 in it.
3, me too.
You know, I'd like to see that. And we have to keep in mind those extra 100 students that are in North that aren't counted. That's significant, and these numbers are significantly higher than even the goals that you put forth.
Well, and, like I said, I am trying to look at a way that we are also showing that we are using the resources that we have spent significant cash to expand, to make sure that we populate them too. So that's why I'm sort of looking at this, and that's why I think the number was hard, because you don't know how this, and, to be honest, I think this tool is helpful this time.
Right, but this, with this option, we're moving close to 500 students out of Forge.
I know, I'm not sure we're there yet on this one.
Which is way more than I think we need to move at this point.
Is that, Scott, is that how high that number is right now?
1940 projected, 2447 minus 1940, we have almost 100.
So, I mean.
That's, that's too many, in my opinion, that's too many to move at this time. It's not necessary, and if we want to minimize disruption, then we need to relook at these numbers.
So let's go, let's move on to option set two, and, and start fresh, and is that okay to?
Well, I'd like, I mean. Let's monkey with this one, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can have a two coming from one, a subset of one, because if, if one is too many, then what can we take out of that to get it to another number for consideration?
I would like to, at this particular juncture, keep only the movement to North Stafford, the Autumn Ridge 166 at this, at this moment.
Yeah, can I just say something?
I support that.
Let me just say something quick on Autumn Ridge. I know they're sitting there, and I know they, they're low-hanging fruit, but these people have been there a long time. They've been there 15, some 16, 17 years, and I just, I'm going to keep saying that, because again, I go to the disruption argument, and, you know, we do what we have to do, but minimal disruption versus numbers, and we're going to shoot for these numbers, but I don't want to see an established community moved when other options are out there. So, again, I'm going to be exhaustive in just saying, I know they're low-hanging fruit, but, again, they've been there a long time.
Are we still, are we counting the students who aren't even here yet? I mean, Emory Mill's not built out, so if we're counting the students that are anticipated to come to North Emory Mill, why? The argument that you just gave is a darn good one. Why, why are we going to move an established community if we can move the kids that aren't even here yet?
Okay, do you want to move that, then, to a next option, and then come back and revisit the, the one that we have up there? Is that, is that where we want to go?
Before we go to option three, do, do we have an option that takes 163 out of the North equation here for consideration?
Well, can I ask, and you guys that are in that district can help me better, why would we not have 166 Autumn Ridge, and, I'm sorry.
North Emory Mill?
Now, why would we have Autumn Ridge projected to move and not have the 163 neighborhoods? Wouldn't it, for me, it seems transportation patterns would make more sense with 163, easier routes to North Stafford than Autumn Ridge has.
Actually, from where I view it, driving the roads, the, it's, it would be easier to get there through Park Ridge to North than it would be from 163, because they've got Whining Creek Road, they've got Courthouse Road, it's, it's not a straight shot as the probe flies, and the buses are already coming to all this North Stafford zone, which is directly touching adjacent to the Autumn Ridge.
But it may be something we examine.
You might, you might want to come, come up and, you know, see the, see the roads, we've got some.
I just drove it, and believe me, I have 30 years of driving those roads, my in-laws live right up there.
I mean, I think everyone's got a tough road to hoe, I mean.
Yeah, and that was, I was thinking, most of the neighborhood's in 163, and you get out to Shelton Shop Road, and right up and right around into North Stafford, where, whereas you're probably, the transportation pattern's probably going to take you through Park Ridge onto 66.
I'm 66.
Yeah.
Hey, Prince William's failed the schools.
You better Prince William to him.
Trish, I mean, I have, I have friends in 163 and Berkshire and Amy Clay, but are, how connected are they? I mean, are they, are they attached at the hip, or are we looking at, is this kind of an APU where?
They're across the street from each other.
They're, they're across the street, they go to the same elementary school, they go to the same middle schools, their kids are on the same teams. I mean, you may as well, you know, look at it as, you know, a subdivision. And they're both within the walking zones, I believe, this.
Of Tom, of Thompson, I think.
Berkshire doesn't walk across the street, but Amy Clay walks up to Thompson, but, but they're essentially together from kindergarten on.
Well, I don't think that it's one that we should completely eliminate, I think we have to show all the options.
I just wanted to look at it as another option, as long as we can get up to 10, Dr. Benson says, option set.
We can go more too, but we have ten preloaded. We hope to do a good thing.
Okay, so.
Do we want to replicate portions of option one into option two, is that?
I know, I'm trying to follow it too. Okay, so the option set one is the, is the one that we have just discussed, and we've got Forge to 80. to 89, is that correct?
That's right. Which moves almost 500 students out of Forge.
And that includes, sorry...
I know, that's the problem, is it's hard to know what the option set is.
All right, so we're calling this option one, then?
Well, and this is, I think for discussion, let's do that, and let's try and populate our 10, and we may be able to whittle down from there, or five, or however.
So, it's not an option, it's a discussion?
Right.
Okay, so that moves...
Okay, so let's move on to the point...
163.
Irene, that you were making. I think you were going with...
Well, we started out this conversation talking about moving the least amount of kids.
Right.
There are no kids in North Emory Mill right now. Why are we, why was that not the first option?
Well, let's take it to the next option. Let's put that, North Emory Mill to where, north? They're at HH Pool Middle School. Let's see what that does.
Are we going to option two now?
Yes, let's do that for now.
Okay, so we wanted to look at, it could be 163, North Emory Mill?
Yep, it's 166.
166.
North Emory Mill.
North Emory Mill, and there is no current homes occupied in that particular area as of right now.
Correct.
Are they sold?
I don't know the answer.
Is all of that on the other side of the creek?
They are.
Yes, that's the divide.
So, there's a natural break.
And there's, the road's closed currently, so...
That's correct. We internally have called it Emory Mill North, okay? So, that's just an internal designation. It's not a representation of what they call themselves.
Do we know if they're going to have a separate HOA?
I do not know that.
And when that road's complete, that links it, right...
To Emory Mill Road, which is adjacent to, at the New York Church.
Right.
It will be connected, and then eventually that road will connect to Mine Road at the 90-degree bend, where it is located in Austin.
Right, okay.
All right.
So, I'm going to change this to North Stafford High School, correct?
That's correct.
So, let's try.
So, now we're looking at option two. Colonial Forge has decreased, North has gone up, and the baseline's set.
Okay. All right, so, we look at a low number at Mountain View. I would like to put in there, I don't believe that this will work, I believe it will be very high, but I need to run it, because I have received many emails about saying, we'll just move Stafford Lakes. So, I just would like to see purely moving the Stafford Lakes neighborhood into Mountain View, just to see what the percentage does.
Would you like just the...
No, like the whole, the whole APU, because I believe that we got to say...
So, do you want to split it up?
Which, in itself, would then create an island.
It would, I just, I need to run it, because I've, that's been a suggestion, I would, I need to know what the percentage is, if we picked up that whole APU and moved it into Mountain View, because I have had several emails saying that would fix the problem, and I need to...
So, run it, it's not a big deal.
I mean, it's called run it, then we can figure it out.
It would create another problem at Mountain View.
Right.
Well, and if we can also look at 142, 143.
Maybe, I just want to see, I think it will, but I need to see what the number is.
And this one, she wanted to add.
Yeah, we can always look at those.
And I don't have a problem with this one, so I'm far as to...
I can't watch it grow. I can't watch it grow.
Did you, did you give me a friend to do the other ones to? Estates at Rocky Run?
Yes, all of them.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we're 104.
At Mountain View.
At Mountain View, okay.
Let's just read this from Mountain View. Can we...
I just needed to see that number from, because that's been suggested.
Well, Mountain View has operated at significantly higher than 100 in the past.
Why didn't the color change, Scott?
Good question.
Sorry.
It's sent to 105.
It's sent to 105 up top.
So, it's not quite at 105, it's almost there.
44.
It needed one more student.
But it shouldn't have done, yeah.
Nicole's probably listening to this right now.
That could be, that could be...
It's okay, Nicole, thank you.
I keep on looking at building capacity numbers, thinking, those are the years, and I'm like, we are ambitious.
Well, that's what I thought when I looked at 2125.
2050, whatever, we're going.
From my perspective, that also creates an island in the middle there. I think that's a tough transition. I would ask that the, I don't believe, when we've got now 89 and 80% now at Colonial Forge, that's 20% of your teachers move right then, in my opinion.
How many programs will they lose then, too?
I think that that's a little ambitious.
And we could expand the CGS program right there.
Can we run 142, 143?
So, we would take, so we would take, I'm sorry, we have to take Stafford Lake, can we take Stafford Lakes out?
Yeah.
I think Stafford Lake, unless you're willing to split the subdivision, if you're willing to split the subdivision, then you could work things out, but we have traditionally not split subdivisions.
My drive-through there...
One in, one out, aren't they, Scott?
My drive-through there, there's not a natural break, I mean, I'd have to really look at where I would...
You can exit off of Polly Quarter Road.
You can.
But that's a side exit kind of...
Yeah.
And that's a nightmare in the morning.
Yeah. Stafford Lakes is kind of...
But I don't know why you would take Stafford Lakes and not take the APUs that are closer, you know, directly adjacent to the Mountain View line here.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Hill, I am just running it for response purposes.
The reason I didn't add in 180 with 143 and 142 is just because it was, 180 is massive unless you split it.
It is.
So...
And it's dense, so the buses go right in, you know...
Would you like us to consider 142 and 143?
Yeah, could you run that along with 117?
Yeah, I mean, I think those are pretty natural, those are pretty natural...
And Holly, did you want to put 187 in there, the Able Lakes?
We don't have to, it was just one that I was just trying to, because I believe 142 and 187, I believe both go to Margaret Brent, if my, which sort of made some sense that we could link those two.
And if the buses are going up the road there anyway.
It is going here.
If not, you're just going to...
So, is that, is that, did that calculate?
It did.
So, Forge at 96, Mountain View at 88, North Stafford 89. That's with North Emory Mill.
And then the APUs, 117, Locklear's Landing, and then the 142 and 143 APUs, the same ones from option one, that grew. They're identified on option one.
So, it's 117, 143, 142?
143, yes.
And not 187, okay.
So, if we were to go with that option, we're looking at school year 2020. We need something done immediately for Colonial Forge, which is why I assume we're going through this process right now. So, I understand that that, for 2021, that makes a significant impact on Colonial Forge, and I think that's wonderful, but what's that going to do for the students next year? None of those houses have sold, it's not, how many students is that moving next year?
Forge is in the yellow.
So, it's the, you're talking about the north impact?
I'm talking about the North Emory Mill impact on next year's students. What is that going to do for next year? Do we know?
That would do zero for next year, what is our guess?
So, what are we accomplishing by doing that, other than, and I just need to say this, because I'm not against that idea, I think it makes a lot of sense, but when you talk long-term, you know, I think we're going to have to come back and redo this, and long-term, we want to move the least amount of kids possible next time, I'm assuming, and, you know, it doesn't make sense long-term.
I think the next time, I think the next time we do this, it will be opening a high school, is my hope. That's what we're trying to get us to.
I agree, and I think that, I think that with the opening of that new high school, and I think we all hope that, I would think that we would be starting fresh and doing some things that make a lot more sense, but at the same time, trying not to move the, you know, move a lot of kids, right? Do you see what I'm saying?
But see, they're not grandfathered, they would just move in.
A little less than 60 students increase from next year at Colonial Forge, a little less than 60. So, obviously, if you make some moves in 142, 117, and 143, they would have some impact on Colonial Forge next year. It wouldn't be super significant because of the size, but they would have some impact. We would not see an impact on Emory Mill North.
For next year?
Several years.
Well, do we know...
I don't know if there'll be any starts, any finishes, and sell, and people moving in next school year. The odds are, I went up there and saw that construction, the odds are, there will be a few.
From what I understand, Emory Mill is building out a lot more quickly than they anticipated.
Yes.
They're taking advantage of the hot real estate market, correct?
Next year, so those kids coming in mid-year, and then the following year, the 18, 2018, 2019 school year, we could see an impact.
And they would have, right.
We would start to see an impact.
And like I said, I'm not against this idea, I just want to play devil's advocate to make sure that we're thinking about, you know, all the possibilities.
I think, Jimmy, one of the things that I look at too, and, I mean, I have Emory Mill, so, this is tough, but with that said, Irene, I can't look you straight in the eye and say we should, we should take rooted communities and move them while we have area, I agree with you. I agree with you, and so...
A large growth area, too.
Yeah, I'm just going to say that. I think it's very important that we, you know, we've had Emory Mill come up, the people that are living there now, and they have said, we don't feel like we're part of the community since we're the new guy. I don't look at them that way. They're Garrettsonville District, they live there, they're as much there as some of these other folks. So, it's important to me that they get treated as such. With that said, the people that are not there yet, I can't, I can't let a community get uprooted for people that don't exist.
Right.
Coming from the Northeast, that aren't even coming from Virginia. I don't know, I see a lot of New Jerseyites in place.
Careful.
But I guess, Jamie, to your point on that, yes, Forge goes a little into the orange, they do, but I guess that's where I kind of weigh it, right? Can we go another year into the orange, if that means not uprooting, you know, Autumn Ridge?
I mean, that's, that's...
Well, I mean, I think, I think that's, I mean, I think, I think we have to see if we add Autumn Ridge to that one, knowing that's a potential, more immediate, like I said, I still would like the board to consider the sibling policy, which I know still pushes it out, but I think that that, you know, until a new high school is built, there's, I mean, this is difficult, I'm not...
What's the North Emory Mill numbers, projected numbers?
It's like 200.
216.
It's a big number, yeah.
Yeah, it's 216. Those are the ones that have not been filled yet. I mean, you know, that is the perfect opportunity for us to, that's what our, you know, that's that demographic planning portion of it, I'm sorry, but, you know, these blocks of houses that have not been built yet, or that are built and no one's moved in, you know, we need to, we can't look, I can't look someone in the eye and say, move out of your neighborhood and protect those houses, those vacant houses, those vacant lots. So, you know, I would say a criteria that we could agree on, hopefully, is North Emory Mill, if, at the projected number of whatever we're saying there, 200 students, will go to one of the high schools.
And North, and North for the feeder pattern, because they are at HH Pool, makes some sense.
I guess the other thing, too, I think about is, you know, and Dr. Benson, you made this point at the meeting on Tuesday, that we have some work to do on the impression and the branding of North Stafford. And I think this might also give us some time to work on the branding of this school, so when these kids do arrive, they're going to be coming to a school where they're going to know better, they're going to know more about it.
And it's a great school, Ms. Decatur, I'm sure can speak to, as a graduate.
North Nation, proud Wolverine.
But again, I can't, I can't make the case that we move in Autumn Ridge over land.
Have we moved enough to North Stafford? And can we wait that long, I think is our, is the discussion we have to have.
Right, and don't forget that, you know, we've, we've got to, the numbers have to be there. In order for us to even have the conversation about high school number six, the numbers have to be there. So, we've got to make sure that, you know, we talked about the 90%, you know, window, we need to get, we need to get there, and we need to do it now.
Have we moved that North Emory Mill to North?
We have, yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
That's reflected in the option two.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Keep in mind, and I keep coming back to this, there's extra 100 students, because that's going to bump you over 90%. They're not counted in the student count for the school, but they're there every day, and there's 100 additional students at North Stafford. Somehow, that has to be factored in. Sorry to interrupt you. No, I'm just, we look at it and we think we're not up to 90, but really, we're above 90. Right, I don't know how the formulas work in that spreadsheet that you have there. Are you able to just add in an extra 100, so that we can see the percentage there?
The concern I have with that is then we've got to do that at every other school.
Okay.
For me, because then we've got to say, well, then Forge has 150 coming in, and then this...
And we need to get those numbers.
So, I don't know, I'd rather go with a pure number of using these, we may, if we can find those numbers, then rerun them with it, but I'm very worried.
Well, 100 is 5%, that's pretty significant. That's a significant number of additional students, and they're coming from somewhere.
I think we're mixing apples and oranges.
And I have to agree with Holly on that one, Trish, only because, like I just said, we need to have a baseline, and we can go, we can go back to it, and we can alter it, and we can factor that in later, but right now, and I know I sound like I'm beating a dead horse here, we need to start talking about high school number six. We've all learned, whether, the town halls that we all participated in, the big one at Colonial Forge, the biggest thing that everybody was in agreeance about was building high school number six. And if we get caught up over 100 here, 100 there, we can kiss that conversation goodbye. So, we can, we can figure those numbers out later, but I think that we have to look at the bigger picture right now, my personal thing.
We can add these options and then add them.
I'm only looking at the 100 in terms of these percentages. If we're looking at 90 as our goal, my point is, we're above 90 at North. Now, if it were a wash, if there were the same amount coming in as going out, we wouldn't be having this conversation, but we've got 200 coming in and 100 going out. So, that means we've got an extra 100 students here, which means one of the other schools is 100 under, if they're coming from somewhere.
So, Scott, is there a way to duplicate this window that we're looking at right here, make another screen, and add whatever we need to for the...
For this evening?
Not for this evening.
If we could just keep that additional 100 students in mind?
Right.
Because Nicole built the tables for us, so we're not sure exactly how they're all linked, and I'm afraid that if we go in and start changing some things...
We're going to blow it up.
We might.
Well, and then, once we bring these options, we can then have these numbers, and then under it, add an additional line, and then we'll see what the percentages are. But I think, right now, let's deal with these numbers, because otherwise, it's going to be, we can keep it as something in mind, but I don't even know what Brook Point's now, you know, I don't know what any of the other numbers are.
Well, if we're going to look at that, then, you know, let's go to the information I received today, and let's pull out all the new approvals from since June 1st, and, you know, I mean...
I'm just talking about real students on the ground, in the desk.
These are real students that have showed up. They're taking up classrooms, they're taking up desks, I've already, I have a request for information in by, what is our classroom percentage uses on these three schools? That, that's important. So, we can, we can do building capacity numbers off design capacity, but, you know, once the numbers are up there, I need, we need to know that there's plenty of classrooms or there's not plenty of classrooms.
Well, there's going to be plenty of classrooms next year, because we moved Emory Mill North there for next year, that's not adding any additional students next year, so...
So, the same number of students are going to be at Forge?
So, the 100, back to the 100 students, we need to count them somewhere, so, either they're in their home school or in their forward school.
But right now, we have created...
You can't count them on both, and you can't count them on none.
We collect that data for all the high schools, and we know the delta?
Yeah, that'll be great.
And then we can apply that with whatever options that the board selects tonight, and then we can show you.
Exactly.
So, is that, is that option set complete, then, as far as just something we're considering? Or do we need any, so that, that's 166, 143, 142, 117?[1732.82]
Which, which one are we on? Is it three or two?
Is that two or three?
Option two, we've identified the same.
Mountain View still.
Neighborhoods to go to Mountain View as option one, that's one seventeen, one forty-two, and one forty-three. We have identified part of APU one sixty-six, which is Embry Mill North, to go to North Stafford, and that's all that we've done for option two.
And how many students is that, Scott? Total?
One sixty-six?
It looks to be about three hundred.
No, it's Embry Mill. Oh, all together.
Almost four hundred, three, two, right?
It still seems low for Mountain View. I mean, I hate to say it, because of.
Are we counting the hundred kids that are anticipated for the Marine or JROTC?
I have no idea.
They'll be existing students.
Yeah, they're existing students.
They can't transfer in for that.
Yeah, they're not transferring.
Right, but we're back to the argument again that there's a, I mean, if.
No, they're already there.
Let's just table this particular argument of keep adding the students. Mr. Haran will be giving them to us at the end of the options because we can spend all night.
They're currently there.
Are you all talking about this? I think we've made the point, we know we're gonna add it later, but, you know, if we're trying to get options tonight, we will never get any at this point.
So you say for option two, you still feel that we're low for Mountain View, so where is another area that we can add for option two?
I mean, it seems like we need to have some in the north that go over towards Mountain View. I mean, it just does.
I mean, twenty-one fifty is the max for Mountain View.
Did we move one?
And we're at nineteen ten. I mean,
That's still.
Two hundred and some students, and that's over four years. It still seems like we should be pushing a.
Some more kids out of Colonial Forge.
Yes, I think so.
What about one eighty-seven? That was one we considered in the first set. Then we keep going right up that.
I do still look up, though, at this Berkshire, these Amy Clay, some of these up here. We are very close up there. I mean, I've got some of these, I just feel like at some point, we're gonna have to consider some of these that are there, because I do believe when we build a new high school, some of this is gonna push to Mountain View in the future.
Well, actually, when we build a new high school, a lot of these southern areas, such as Stafford Lakes, will certainly be either back at Stafford where they started or at the new high school.
Right, which means up north, we will then be pushing into the schools up in the north.
But we're talking, whatever, whatever these group we talk about, we're talking Mountain View, correct? Mountain View. We're talking Mountain View. We're not, so North Stafford, in this scenario, is, okay, so we're talking Mountain View.
Their fault.
But that, if you did that, that would give you over five hundred that you're moving out, and what would the number be for Mountain View, then, Scott? If you added, who are you adding? Holly?
I don't know. I mean, I'm just trying to come up with some that push, I mean, we can keep Mountain View that low, but I just feel like it's a harder sell for me to tell my supervisor, I need a high school. Because he does not.
Well, keep in mind, these are projections.
I mean, but we've got to start planning.
Yeah, we're, we're planning, but we're not perfect. We won't know until these students come. I mean, we've had times when families move in, they have all elementary students. You know, then we went through an economy change, and they had middle and high school students. We can't predict, well, I guess, you know, Scott does the best he can, but or Pat, I mean, Pat, I mean, is, this isn't in concrete, is it? These students, when they're coming, I mean, we, we put our best numbers forward.
And we do it based on methodology, which is fairly proven, and we're fairly accurate, but there is a.
But we're not moving anybody.
Plus or minus, absolutely.
And the economy is out in effect, too.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Better economy, more people moving in, more children.
All right, do you want to keep this option? I have some concerns with it, but I'm willing to move on from it, to move some, to try something else, because I think, at this rate, we will.
Be here all night.
Be here night, which is fine, but I will not be here next week, so you all can do this after that.
Stop rubbing it in.
Hey, that's okay.
If it's after Wednesday or later, I won't be here next week because I'm gonna be out of town Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Oh, we see, she made it, so we can't notice it before, while she's still here.
So we're calling this set two, right? So set two is at least a discussion.
And these are for discussion, because we can all still walk away with concerns with them.
Is there more, isn't there one more APU we wanted to add to Mountain View to get Colonial Forge down to?
I suggested one forty-six. I don't know what it's gonna do. It's only forty-one students. But it goes along the same, as far as bus routes are concerned, when you've got one forty-three and one forty-two, one forty-six runs along the same. Yeah.
Let's do it in the next one. Let's do it in the next one.
Yes, I agree.
What, for north?
I would say leave one forty-six, the island that you create there, all those people drive right through. I don't know, we'll see.
They create.
Okay, okay.
All the APUs in that little jet out, you mean?
Well, these people are running right through that something.
You're right. That's just a hard sell for me.
Well, why don't we leave it as it is and then go on to another option?
That's what I was trying to do. Yes, let's do it. All right.
Let's start with some new thoughts.
One sixty-three?
Okay.
Yes.
To north or to Mountain View?
Logistically, it makes sense.
All right.
I was gonna say Mountain View, but, okay, you pick.
I, I don't care.
No, it's closest, these, this here, it's right next to North Stafford.
It can go either way.
It's actually.
Oh, for the back.
Driving wise, it's not far from Mountain View either.
Yeah.
Well, my.
Which neighborhood was that?
It was one sixty-three.
Arbor Glen Marshall Estates.
I think.
Shallow Creek.
What part of one sixty-three would you like to change?
Jamie, did you say both?
Both of them.
There's, there's actually four.
Oh. All of them. No, I'm just kidding. Just Arbor Glen.
I would say all of it, because Georgetown East.
Even Liberty Knowles?
Oh, not Liberty Knowles, you're right, sorry.
And what school is the receiving school?
Mountain View.
There's Pool on her.
Except Liberty Knowles.
So we are changing Arbor Glen Marshall Estates and Stove, Amy Clay, Berkshire, to Mountain View High School.
And, and one seventeen. I think one seventeen is a given in all of ours.
All right, go ahead and make that a change.
Yeah.
So one six-six, one one-seven. One six-three is all to Mountain View.
How many are we on? Set four?
Set three.
Set three.
It is one.
What about one forty-two?
Forty-two.
One forty-two.
I think so, too.
What about one eighty-seven?
I'd do one eighty-seven as well.
So would you like to do one forty-two?
Yes.
I'm getting, Dr. Benson, I'm getting a report that we can't hear Scott Haran, who's doing a lot of the talking. Can we put a microphone over by him in the? Somebody catch me up, oh, thank you, sir.
Okay, so we've moved one forty-two to Mountain View.
Could we also add one eighty-seven, please? That's at Margaret Brent attendance area. I did one eighty-seven as well, because that's, both one forty-two and one eighty-seven currently attend Margaret.
We're adding APU one eighty-seven to Mountain View?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, what did that do? So now, so now we need to move to North Stafford. Let's, I mean, we can go back, but let's, let's move to North Stafford for that option. Mr. Conley, did you want to continue with the August, excuse me, Embry Mill North in this particular one?
At least, let's see what the numbers do.
To North Stafford?
To North Stafford. Okay. Is there any additions to that one?
For north?
For north. Do you want to add in Autumn Ridge, just to see, Mr. Conley? I'm not trying to push it. I just think we should see what in addition of those two neighborhoods. This is all about seeing what are the, what are the numbers do.
APU one sixty-six, Autumn Ridge?
Yes, sir.
To north.
To north in option?
Three.
Three. Potentially, that takes Forge low. However, we know there's growth there. Can we keep that one for now, Mr. Conley, knowing that certainly we can pull that Autumn Ridge out? It's just, we need, I think we need to see a variety of options.
Yeah, I would ask if we could, if we keep that one, if we could also keep the one without one sixty-six as well, that had.
So, yeah, Mr. Haran, could we duplicate, yeah, if we could duplicate that one, one with Autumn Ridge and one without, does that? Sorry.
When we do our pros and cons, I just am gonna say this again. I want to know what this is gonna do to Colonial Forge next year, because the whole reason for doing this in a hurry is to get some relief for Colonial Forge immediately. So I think that the point is, we want to see immediate relief, so let's just not forget that.
And I think that's how we have to look for space at Forge. And I know that the suggestion I made about the siblings pushes that even further, but I have to say, I do have some sympathy in that, in that way.
And hypothetically, with the grandfathering, there could be no change in Forge.
Very little. So I think, I do think we have to look very carefully there.
But I think, you know, I think, and like I said, I've sent out a request for information. I think you have a good point, but where is the data? What classrooms are empty and what classrooms are full? I have reports from teachers in the building at Colonial Forge that there are several empty classrooms throughout the day, so, I mean, we need to see this classroom count. So if there's fifteen, twenty classrooms that are empty at Forge, you know, so you can say siblings, you could say, I want to see classroom usage. So where are we, where are we, where are we coming to this, to this head-on student count? Is it, we don't, we can't feed the kids? We can't transport the kids? We can't teach the kids in the classroom? I just need to know that.
And I'm not arguing with you.
I would just mention to the board, remember that we're talking twenty-twenty numbers.
Right.
No, but, but, but Mr. Decatur said, you know, we want to give them relief now, so, so for now, next year, I want to know what the, for the next couple of years, will they be okay with, possibly with a sibling?
And I, and I realize that that's a tough.
And we'll be able to provide you the numbers, the projected numbers, on next year and the following year and those years, based on these options.
But I have a specific request for information on classroom.
Utilization.
Utilization and classroom counts, right.
So option four, I've made those changes, so it's the same thing as option three, but Autumn Ridge is not included, it remains at Colonial Forge.
Correct.
So you can see option four down here on the slide here, these are the numbers. I'm going to scroll up now
Yes.
so we can get some additional options available to you.
So option three, no Autumn Ridge, option four has Autumn Ridge, right? Or am I getting backwards here?
I think it's three includes.
And I, I would like to get some data from the past years as to what the enrollment has been at Forge. I recall there were years when Forge was quite high, when the capacity was, you know, determined to be eighteen hundred, and they handled, you know, quite a larger number than that. So just for, for information purposes, if we could get some historical data, you know, on Forge, I mean, we don't have to go back to two thousand when it opened, but, you know, we should, we should have that fairly easily available to see what, what the enrollment has been from year to year, and just pick a date, you know, whether it's.
We'll do the ADM, the September, the end of September ADM, we should have that data.
But I, but I would like to see that, because I recall, and Mountain View, actually, Mountain View as well, were significantly over there, what we term design capacity.
Of eighteen hundred at the time.
Able to function and provide a good education to the students there.
So are we on?
We're on.
We're moving out.
Option, the last one we discussed was option four, and it did, it included everything in option three except Autumn Ridge.
Okay.
Autumn Ridge stated Colonial Forge.
So I would like to look at the numbers. One of the things that I did for, for my constituents who didn't go to the Colonial Forge Town Hall, or Town Hall, was asked them to, you know, look, you guys don't really have a horse in the race, look at this and tell me what you think is the best route to go. So I got a couple of emails over the past week or two. One of the things that was suggested was looking at both Autumn Ridge and, sorry, Austin Ridge. And apparently, they ran the numbers and they worked. So if we could look at it here and see what that does to our, and that's to go to north.
And that would be APU one fifty-nine, Austin Ridge?
One fifty-nine, all of it.
Does that include Westgate? That's the, the under, that's the area that's building pads.
I believe so, because that's part of that.
Okay, so we'll take the entire APU, one fifty-nine. So let me do that first.
Okay.
To north, correct?
To north.
Okay, so the numbers should reflect, in option five, a change due to APU one fifty-nine.
Right, and then one sixty-six, I believe.
And just Autumn Ridge?
One fifty-nine, Austin Ridge, and Autumn Ridge.
So APU one sixty-six, just the Autumn Ridge portion?
Correct, yes, yeah.
Okay. To North Stafford, correct?
That's correct.
It's ninety-eight?
If we.
That's a little much.
And I'm not, we're not, we're not gonna make the same argument we've been making about the hundred students, so let's just not go there. But, but it does, so I, I think that's rather high and assumes absolutely no growth. When, at the Town Hall that Mr.
Takes a lot out of Garrisonville.
Well, and, well, and the other piece, though, as, Mr. Conley, as we, when we were at your Town Hall meeting, as I recall, our projections potentially for north, there's some apartments on Garrisonville Road called the Garrisons. Ms. Sellers indicated that she thought that those apartments were going to move some of them to fifty-five plus, but we don't know that. That is not proffered, that is not an assumption. And as we all know, assumptions can be scary, because it's four hundred and eighty-nine apartments. That's a lot of, of kids. If it ratchets back, that's great, but I just have some concern, I have concern with a ninety-eight percent number.
Well, and I would also point, the same point I was.
Take out, take out Westgate, that, is that?
Westgate's only fifteen students, I just looked.
And the problem is, is it's on that road for the bus. You would have to take a bus, drive it through there, pick up fifteen students and drive back out.
Yeah, they're. It's the same as the Berkshire, Amy Clay, they're right across the street.
All right, what if we take, what if we just do, sorry, just Austin Ridge and not Autumn Ridge? Because from what I'm, what I was told, that the numbers worked out perfectly across the board.
So I'm gonna move that back to Colonial Forge.
What, A Quiet Harbor, thinking Austin Ridge works? What, really?
Did you say move A Quiet Harbor?
So.
I will get up right now.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, someone told me you were up for reelection, so.
That has nothing to do with it.
Oh, of course not.
Nothing to do with it.
So we're gonna move that back to Colonial Forge.
Now, now, children, let's stay focused.
They're saying to move Autumn Ridge back down.
I want to see if the numbers work, yes.
And we do need to look at Mountain View, though.
Yeah, we gotta get there, yes.
In this one.
I think we need to do the suggestions that you did the first time in this number.
Did they have any suggestions for increasing Mountain View?
Apparently, it was working across the board, that's.
So for, I mean, so just, Scott, if I may, correct me if I'm wrong, so we're using the twenty-one, right?
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty, twenty, right. We're projecting two hundred and fifteen students for Embry Mill North.
That's correct.
And that is part of these, the numbers here that we're showing on the percentages for, of fill for Colonial Forge.
Under the options that they were identifying.
No, I mean, currently, the current, the current.
That's right, the projected numbers at Forge.
So, I mean, options are good, but I think as a board, we, you know, it's really a no-brainer where I sit is, the two hundred and fifteen students are going to north.
What two hundred and fifteen?
I mean, there's two hundred and fifteen students that are currently scheduled at Colonial Forge for Embry Mill North that have not been, these apartments and these things have not been sold yet, so.
I'm not saying that I, that I.
No, no, I'm just, I'm not asking, I'm not asking anybody of anything. I'm just saying, from where I sit, it's a no-brainer to, every option has two hundred and fifteen. from where I sit, it's a no-brainer to, every option has 215 students at North from Embry Mill, I mean, North Stafford High School has those 215 students. And then we focus on building another 50 or 60 students on North and then move to, and worry about the Mountain View issue.
Yeah, I mean, I would, and as far as the Austin Ridge, I'd make the same case for Austin Ridge as Autumn Ridge, which is moving an established community while leaving land.
Right, well, I'm just.
But if you're going to move, if you're gonna tell.
We have to look at.
I totally get it.
If, I just need to say this, if we're gonna sit here as a board and tell people it's an emergency, we need to get students out of Colonial Forge, and these people over here, you need to move because it's an emergency, but, oh, these people right here, Embry Mill North can wait, I'm not saying I don't disagree that Embry Mill North should be redistricted during this to North Stafford, but that doesn't do the job for next year.
For next year, right.
And I wouldn't say it's an emergency, Orange is not an emergency.
Then why are we redistricting?
Yeah, but it's still.
Because it's an emergency down the line if we don't.
But it's still 215 students that are built into these numbers.
Okay.
That, that's the problem. It's, so if, if you say, if you back the 215 students out of Colonial Forge from Embry Mill North, those numbers are gonna be a lot different. It's not gonna be 24, 27, it's gonna be 22, you know, whatever, right? So, I guess what I'm saying is, listen, just lock in the 215 students at Embry Mill North, and, you know, because that, because that's the way I thought we discussed at another, you know, how we have to be more involved in the planning, if there's a, if there's a new community coming up right here, we need to tell that community now, hey, you're not going to Colonial Forge, you are scheduled to go to this. I mean, we need to have that kind of foresight, that, that's all I'm saying. And currently, these people aren't, don't live there yet, but, but they are involved in our numbers, so.
100 percent agree.
You know, that, so, but I agree that you're right, it's not gonna do anything right now, but I, from what I understand, they're selling and they're getting, they're gonna get ready to sell, and they're, I mean, Embry Mill's a hot cake, so.
I just, I just realized, probably back with our, we don't have to go back to the option, that 117 island of Locklear's Landing, it's that yellow triangle on everybody's, to me, that's sort of one of those, like Mr. McCosker's saying, that should go to Mountain View on pretty much every one of our options. I know it's a very small percentage, but you all see that island there, it just.
It is, it is an island, I'll give it that.
It's an island.
And it seems like that should be in one of them.
It's five students.
It is, it's, and that just seems like that's kind of one, on everyone, it should go, an easy one.
And, of course, they would be grandfathered just like anybody else, and if we have a sibling policy, they could stay, it's not gonna be a significant number.
Right, but I think long-term, the map should be colored in.
You know, and I'm, I'm just trying to, to get us down the, down the path of, you know, hey, we, you know, we spent this time, we looked at all these options, but we have made some hard, some informal decisions as a board, hey, we're gonna, Embry Mill North, you're probably going to go to North Stafford, I mean, as it sits right now, without any other data coming in. Those 215 students that are, that are not there yet are gonna go, because we, like I said, I couldn't look, I couldn't look constituents in the face and say, I'm gonna move you, but these new students coming in that aren't there yet, so anyway.
We're making room out of you for these.
Yeah, I want these new kids that are gonna come in, and, you know, we love them all, but, so that, I guess that's where, if there are certain, if there are certain APUs that we know as a board that we are gonna move towards, let's leave the calories and all the late and the long hours and the gnashing of teeth for the ones that we really are gonna have issues picking, because it's such a hard decision, that's, that's all I'm.
I think to Ms. Decatur's point, I do believe, though, we need to move some number of what I would call real students eventually to North. I mean, and I think that's where the hard, hard part comes, but I think if we have some general potential agreement for at least several of the options for Embry Mill North, we know what kind, what sort of number we're looking to move, and which may eliminate some others that we won't move, because there's, in my opinion, no way you could move Embry Mill North and Austin Ridge, that's like 500 people right there, if I'm adding quickly. So, it does, Mr. McCosker, I like how you're, if we're gonna go down at least one path, it populates the other one. And I, I know that 117 is very few students, but it just, it's, if we forget it, Mr. Haran on one of these by accident, from Mountain View, I believe that most people agree that should go there. Okay, so, what do you want to do now? We have, is this only, Austin Ridge is only in there, is that correct, Mr.? I'm sorry, I got lost.
Right now, option five only has Austin Ridge and Westgate, APU 159 is going to North Stafford.
Okay.
I mean, to Dwayne's point.
So, we need more at Mountain View.
To Dwayne's point, though, if we're gonna look at Embry Mill North as a given, then Austin Ridge wouldn't even belong in there.
You're right.
I mean, that's where I'm at, I'm at, if there's 215, and I, and I fully understand where Jamie's coming at, because really, you're not doing anything today to move kids out of the school, and that's it, and that is something that we need to work through, but those 215 kids are already in our numbers, and.
Well, then why do we need to redistrict right now?
We.
If that's the way we're, if that's the route we're gonna go, then, then why do we need to do it right this second?
Could we redistrict next year?
And then we, and then high school's number six doesn't get built, and everybody's walking, you know, we're going to classes that have, you know, 50 kids in them, we gotta do something.
Well, remember, the targeted growth area, which is in the comp plan, says in, around Colonial Forge High School, there should be 3,720 new units in the next immediate term. We're gonna be, we're gonna be busy in this area.
That's gonna affect our point, too, so.
Yeah, because it's down here, so.
I mean, we're in, we're in a little bit of, bit of a pickle here as far as.
Well, I mean, Ms. Decatur, you know, has, you know, has a point, I mean, it.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying she doesn't, I'm just, I'm just saying, working with the data that we have, and we're making the decision to get ahead of this.
Planning.
Now, could we get ahead of it next year?
Let's get ahead of it.
It would be the same thing next year, you know what I mean? I don't think it would be any more than a year, but, I mean.
Our projections, just to remind the board, our projections for next year show us in the orange, which is over 100 percent of design capacity at Colonial Forge, so that's additional 60-some students, and they're, they're not, there may be a few that come from Embry Mill North, but essentially, all of them are coming from existing subdivisions that are either under construction or existing built-out subdivisions. So, we saw orange as an issue, and that's why we felt it prudent to bring to the board to consider starting the process now. Remember, this is a four, we're kind of looking at this over a four-year phase by grandfathering the students, so we need to act, you know, in staff's opinion, we need, it would be prudent to act now in preparation for next school year.
I.
Plus, with the, with, you know, the news article, I get more complaints about not able to access the number of classes desired at, I believe it is impacting our ability to offer the best services to as many kids and as many programs across our high schools if we're not somewhat more balanced over time, because then our staff isn't maybe particularly allocated the correct way.
Well, and don't forget the core services, how long are our kids standing up, eating their lunch, and how long does it take them to get through the lunch line?
8:30 in the morning.
I mean, we had the same problem at Stafford High School for a long time. Yeah. So, you know, I mean, that's the stuff we have to take into consideration, too, are they gonna have time to eat?
Right.
Tell you what, my kids don't, my kids don't learn very well when they don't have food in their stomach.
So, I know Mr. McCosker is, is ready to go, that the Austin, just to stick with Embry Mill North as a, as a beginning, starting point for moving students to North Stafford, is that correct?
Yeah, that, I, you know, I would, I would ask the board to agree that Embry Mill North, the 215 students in the design charrette are, in every option are moved to North Stafford High School.
Is there some general agreement to that?
We have, still have another 200-and-something students to move.
I can agree with that, but then, what are we doing to Colonial Forge for next year?
Well, and we, and we need to make sure that North isn't too low, so.
Right.
We, do we need to add, in some options, some additional students to go to North in the immediate, right away?
Yeah, I mean, I think even under our old options of 275 to North, notwithstanding the 100-and-so-odd students that Ms. Healy brought up, that would be at North possibly, you know, we, so we still have another probably 75 to 80 students to move to North, in addition to the 215.
All right.
You know, again, Embry Mill's coming out of my district, and so, I am, I am willing to say, yeah, let's go ahead and include Embry North, Embry Mill North, but, but that's sad, I want to advocate for my folks in Autumn Ridge, moving forward, so.
Yeah, and I agree, I will not, right now, in that, in that agreeing with that 215 from Embry Mill North, I will not advocate for Autumn or Austin, offhand.
Well, I mean, we've got, we have more space at Mountain View than we have at North anyways.
Yes.
What if you just moved Embry Mill to North, and, and fine, then, then can we put the dent, and I'm just making a suggestion, can we put the rest of the dent, you know, from Colonial Forge to Mountain View? Where can we play with those numbers?
Okay, well, then, let's try that, that kind of option. So, we are at, are we on five or six?
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, in option five, we're on five, would you want me to reverse the Austin Ridge and, and.
I believe so, I believe that's what I'm hearing.
And put in the Embry, Embry Mill North, and then start from there with option five?
Yes, so, let's, yes, let's start with the Embry Mill North.
It puts them at 81 percent.
They still need more, yeah.
And it's.
Wow, it's going down, I mean, why'd it go down so much?
Hold on, what happened there, option five?
It's 89.
Oh, 89 percent at North Stafford, 81, because they're 2050.
So, Mr. McCosker, I, I understand your, what is then your suggestion, if it is not Autumn Ridge, who else is close to be able to go into North? Because 89, if we've got others, and I know we haven't done Mountain View yet, I'm trying to.
Well, let's look at Mountain View.
Yeah, I was gonna move over to Mountain View, because I just didn't want to miss your, you know, we.
Sure, I got it, okay.
Mr. Conley, Mr. Conley's kind of getting shell-shocked here, because, and so.
And let's do this option, after five, let's take a five-minute break.
Yeah, I would love a point of privilege on that, man.
So, but let's, let's work through number five. Okay, so then, now we're looking for larger numbers to Mountain View.
And I will go ahead and put Locklear.
117, my big, big five students, that's probably not gonna be a big, but, but I think that's one that needs to just populate every time. Okay, in the last option, as I understand it, we did 163, is that correct, to Mountain View, was that correct, Mr. Haran? I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
In our last option, we worked with 163 to Mountain View, as I recall.
We have Waters Edge, Somerset, that whole Holly Corner Road grouping.
Okay, I had that written down completely different, okay, I must be off.
You were asking about 163.
Right, I thought that 163.
Yeah, you're correct, I'm incorrect.
No, no, that's, believe me, we're, so I would say then, go ahead.
I said, I think, Madam Chair, I mean, I know, you don't, you probably don't want to hear this, but I, I think also the logical, you know, 142 and 143 are kind of that logical Western districts that provide 100 students to Mountain View.
Right, I would keep 142, and like I said, I, I would say that 187, because both those two, they don't join, but as I said, they, they go to Margaret Brent together, then they split to Thompson, it seems like that bus might run through there. I mean, to be honest, it's not dense, it's spread out.
So, that's, 187 is how many?
187 has 14.
14.
Yeah, I mean.
142 has 55.
Yeah, so that, so that whole 142, 143, 187, and 117 was kind of the package that we had in, in option two.
74 students.
Yeah, well, no, all together, it's 120-some-odd students.
Oh, you mean you added in 143?
Yeah, 143, 142, 187, and 117.
Then I think we need to look, then, further north for something else, because it's hard to pick anything and get any.
Oh, no, this is all you, you can't just back out now.
Mr. Decatur has the input for me on that one.
Okay, so I made, I made those changes in option five, they include 142, 143, all of 143, and 187 to go to Mountain View.
All right.
So, the numbers now in option five should reflect the Embry Mill, the Locklear Landing, and then 142, 143, and 187.
I think then we would look at another county to the west up there, which is, let's put Augustine North in there and see how it populates.
Why don't we leave this as it is and then go to another option? Because these numbers are pretty on track.
I agree. I mean, you can, let's, let's do exactly what you just said in a new option, is that okay?
I'm sorry, Scott, could you read those off one more time?
Yes, sir. Option five includes Embry Mill North, it includes going to North Stafford, it includes APUs, 117 going to Mountain View, it includes APU 142, and all of 143 going to Mountain View, and it includes 187 going to Mountain View.
Okay, thank you.
So, some of these will start to be coming, if you're not careful, it'll, you'll start repeating.
I know, and that's what we're.
From like option one or two. We know option one doesn't include Embry Mill North, so we know.
That whole 142, 143, 187, 117 is repeated once or twice already.
Yes, sir.
Say that again.
Must make sense.
That whole 142, 143, 187.
Okay, if, if Mr. Haran makes the, creates that one again and adds Augustine North in the next option, then would everybody like to have a break?
Do you have a?
I didn't have cake, I was in discipline with you.
Is there cake in the other room? I've got half a can, you are.
Everybody have a bite?
They're in two sections, so I, really, I'm in the second section.
I thought we didn't split sections. Is there a natural break? All right, let's.
There was a natural break, it's right here.
Moving on.
Okay, obviously, we're all getting punchy, it was that one, and then it was adding the Augustine North.
Okay, so, we want to option six?
Yes.
Okay, option six is everything in option five plus Augustine North?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I think we all need a.
Yeah, we all need a break, but I, on the break, I would think about, if, if it's coming up in multiple options, 143, 142, 187, and 117, I would say that the board think about that as, as a package to Mountain View High School, that we could agree on, 116 students, I think that, that makes to Mountain View.
I'm gonna, I mean, because of my area, I'm gonna say, I'd like 143 to be one we really consider, I am somewhat comfortable with the ones with the feeder pattern with Margaret Brent, they probably go to Hartwood, and it just sort of, and I, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, I look at where they, there's no connection.
Trying to move us.
Yeah, I agree, and, and another thing that I want to see at some point is, I want to see that, that grouping that we're talking about, without doing anything to the, without moving, without first moving Embry Mill North to North Stafford, I want to leave that alone, and I want to see what just those numbers to Mountain View do to Colonial Forge.
Yeah, minus 116, that's all it does.
Right.
Minus 116 students.
Well, thank you.
But, but yes, I do want to.
Take a break now.
I want to see that also.
How does that?
I want to see it on the board, like, that's what Ms. Decatur's saying.
Watch the numbers, they're moving, they're moving.
We want to see it on the board.
I thought you were going a little loony there on the first side.
No, yeah, I'm the one that wants it.
Thank you very much.
80, 90 foot.
So, option six is complete, and it reflects Augustine North to Mountain View.
Could I see that option without 143 in it?
I was gonna say, is it in place of, or in addition to?
Could you remove?
It's in, it's in addition to, option five, we added Augustine North.
Could you remove 143 from that one, based on the comment I made about the, oh, yeah.
I don't know where we're at now with this, I'm sorry, I've got, I've got.
We're at option six, and what she's done is she's put Augustine North in.
And I took 143 out, I just want to see.
Yeah.
Take these out? So, you wanna take one-forty-three out?
Yes, like that one. I just wanna see.
Back to Ford, right? Back to Ford?
Back to Ford, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure there's anywhere else I can send it.
Well, yeah, 'cause one-forty-three, if we, when we get high school number six...
I'm hoping they're gonna be really close to it.
Five years.
But it doesn't work. I just have to see it, I'm a visual, so. Okay, that takes it really low. Okay, it takes it low. I just, I just wanted to see it.
I, I have a problem, the same problem Chris has with his established subdivisions, Augustine North. He's been here longer than a lot of these subdivisions, and I don't know why we would split that up.
Split what up?
When there's other options.
Which one?
Augustine North.
Okay.
Has been in Ford since Ford opened.
I know. I'm just looking at options of things that are close to the border of blue. We were kinda doing that, so it was, I'm just throwing out options to, I think this is what we need to do. This is the kind of work the board should do, and I think we're doing it.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not getting a committee recommendation, we're actually sitting there and looking at it.
And we say, sorry, I had a time, which is...
I know, well, we all were.
Chris, I'm sorry.
Okay, would everybody like a few minutes to, to break?
Would you, um, so, did you want option six for that to remain, or how, how would you like us to handle that?
I'm turning off my mic now.
I guess, I guess put one-forty-three back in, I guess. I don't know, I don't remember where we are either.
It's getting fifty-two, my kids are very hard.
That's the problem, is you don't...
I can't, I can't keep up with what we're doing.
Okay, option six is complete.
Why don't you leave that there for the moment and let us all think, 'cause I know I'm bug-eyed at it to remember what we're doing.
We'll come back recap what you just did.
Option six, yes, sir. Okay, very good. Break down.
Can you link the maps while we take a break?
Okay, do we think it would be helpful to recap where we've been, or...
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, and I need a fresh paper.
All right, Scott.
Break it down for us.
I'm sorry.
Break it down.
I think that'll help us, 'cause if we have reached saturation, we may all sit here and say... But, or if we, if it's very clear we're missing something, then let's do it, and, you know, so, if you could go over our options, I, my list is a mess, so...
Certainly.
I'm trying to do option one, two, three, just so I can...
Okay, is the board ready?
Okay, is the board ready, if you are writing them down?
It's like erasing, it's like, oh, that just gets...
Where'd you lost it all?
Okay, let's let Mr. Haran...
Just a reminder, if you turn your mics off, you can turn them back on now, if you so choose.
Oops.
Didn't know that was an option.
That's number seven.
That's right.
Okay, um, option one includes APU one-seventeen to Mountain View, APU, APU one-forty-two to Mountain View, one-forty-three in its entirety to Mountain View. APU one-sixty-three to North Stafford.
All of it?
No, Arbor Glens and Marshall Estates, and then APU one-sixty-three, the Stow of Amy Clay and Berkshire to North Stafford. APU one-sixty-four, Augustine North to Mountain View. APU one-sixty-six, Autumn Ridge to North Stafford. APU one-eighty-seven, Abel Lake, Lake Ridge to Mountain View, and that completes option one.
Do you have that number of students in there?
That was a high number, as I recall.
Was that the one that was...
It was in the five-hundred.
Yes, ma'am. It was just shy of five-hundred.
Yeah, I just wanna note, I think that's too many, but...
Right, and so we may eliminate.
Noted.
I gotta just recap it, because...
Yeah.
You guys are option two.
We ready for option two?
Yes.
APU one-seventeen to Mountain View. APU one-forty-two, one-forty-three in its entirety to Mountain View. APU one-sixty-six, that's North Emery Mill to North Stafford. And I believe that's it.
That's about four-hundred kids?
Like, two-hundred don't exist yet, right?
Right.
Oh, so North Emery already does have some...
Ready for option three?
No.
Okay, option three, APU one-seventeen to Mountain View, APU one-forty-two to Mountain View. APU one-sixty-three to Mountain View. Arbor Glen, and APU one-sixty-three, Stow of Amy Clay, Berkshire to Mountain View. APU one-sixty-six, North Emery Mill to North Stafford. APU one-sixty-six, Autumn Ridge to North Stafford. APU one-eighty-seven to Mountain View, and that completes option three.
Yep.
So, option four is exactly the same as option three, but Autumn Ridge is not included. It remains at Colonial Forge. Are we ready for option five?
Yes.
Okay. Option five, APU one-seventeen to Mountain View. APU one-forty-two and one-forty-three in its entirety to Mountain View. APU one-sixty-three, the Stow of Amy Clay and Berkshire to Mountain View. APU one-six... I wanna make sure I'm on the right column. No, I'm sorry, I was incorrect. Option five did not have APU one-sixty-three. I was reading the wrong column. APU one-sixty-six, North Emery Mill to North Stafford. APU one-eighty-seven to Mountain View. And that completes option five.
I feel like we already had that one.
That's your takers.
I did.
It's just minorly different from three.
Right, yep, it's missing one.
Yeah.
One-sixty-three.
Option six, one-seventeen to Mountain View. One-forty-two and one-forty-three in its entirety to Mountain View. APU one-sixty-four to Mountain View. Just Augustine North, thank you. APU one-sixty-six to North Stafford. Emery Mill North, sorry, and APU one-eighty-seven, Abel Lake to Mountain View.
One-eighty-seven?
One-eighty-seven to Mountain View, and that completes option six.
Okay, I would invite everybody to look over these pieces. Is there some combination of these pieces or others that seem to be missing, or you would like consideration? And everybody can take a minute, 'cause I know there's a lot of the numbers are similar, so, is there some combination, or, um... I believe that, well, I'll give everybody a moment.
It, it would be helpful if we had the student numbers to go along with this. I know we, we have them on the chart, but kind of translating them over, because any of these that need five-hundred students, I think is too many.
I think option five is difficult, too.
I, I, I think it's gonna be too much disruption. I think it, actually, I think it would, you know, adversely affect Forge.
Could add, you could add a column. No, I don't have to tell the people that, I'm just telling us. You could add a column on the Excel spreadsheet. Bruce doesn't want us messing with it.
Yeah, not, not now, but I mean, it's, when, when this comes back to us, when you send this to us, include those student numbers, because that's, to me, that, that's gonna be important, particularly where we're looking at putting schools over ninety-five percent, you know, in like Mountain View and, and it, what, which one is, uh, is that option?
Scott, can you scroll back up again?
At the top.
I can.
What is, what is, yeah, I can't see the numbers.
Which option would you like?
Uh...
Six down.
Yeah, I think it was number six. Where's, where's six? Yeah, see where... We've got Mountain View at ninety-five, yet Forge is under ninety. And that's where you, you threw in Augustine North.
Twenty-two, ninety-five.
Yeah.
I think the closest to being equal is number four, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Right, well, we've got a, right. Well, that's Jamie's point.
What's my point?
Speaks to Jamie's point about...
What's my point?
Leaving the, excuse me?
She's like, what's my point? I wanna know her point, too.
I just say stuff, I don't know.
No, no, I mean...
About relieving some of the...
Immediate.
Immediate need for space.
Yeah.
For next year.
But they, they will, that'll show us, they'll... Yep.
Well, we'll show it for each year. For each option that the board chooses to pursue, we'll show the next four years what the impact will be on each school.
That's good.
We should be able to do that, based on our forecasted numbers.
Can I see number two again? Scroll down.
Yeah, I apologize.
We don't know that it's not that bad, though. That's, that's what I'm afraid of.
Well, that's why we need to know.
Especially when you look at the targeted growth areas that are, you know, listed in the comp plan. I pulled it up, and I, you're welcome to look at it, and so I might, I put it on my, my Facebook page. I mean, altogether, it's about seven thousand units between Brook Point and Colonial Forge.
'Cause that Center Port is the other area that's targeted growth, and that's another thousand.
So, I mean... So, we've got, yeah, we've got Courthouse, we have Brook, we have Leon Station.
Yeah, what'd you say, Emily?
Now, Mr. McCon, Mr. Conley, and I, believe me, it's been a long day.
It's Pat Conley.
I said, Mr. Conley.
It's my dad.
That's a good name. That's a good, strong name.
Patrick Michael John Conley.
A good Irish name.
Good, yeah, well, yeah, sure it is.
So, does anyone wanna do an option seven?
I, I wanna see, well...
I'm looking at option two. Is, is there any way we could add one-eighty-seven to um, Mountain View on option two and see what happened on that? Those, Mountain View and North are pretty close, but Forge is still a little high.
One-eighty-seven in option two to Mountain View, ma'am?
Yes, just to, just to see what the percentages turn out to be.
And, and, is that all of APU one-six-six that we're using there, or was that just...
Emery Mill.
It's not, okay. So, I think I'm taking good notes, I'm not.
Well, he's gonna give it all to us.
Probably doesn't make a big dent, but...
No. Did it make any change?
Probably a certain percent, you know, point something.
I think it's twenty kids, okay.
Then it doesn't matter to me if you wanna take it back out. Just wanna see if it made a difference.
I think eighty, one-eighty-seven is one of those areas that almost every option includes, included one-eighty-seven.
It could, I mean, and, you know, I haven't talked to those neighborhoods, too. I mean, I'm just looking at it as a little bit with feeder, so, um...
It would make sense.
The, the one, um, for the board, you'll see this when we do the maps, but you'll, you'll see if one-eighty-seven is included, we, we...
It chops it.
Drive through that attendance area from the southern neighborhoods of Colonial Forge to get to Colonial Forge, so, we'll, we'll have a number of buses driving down, I would imagine Kellogg Mill.
Kellogg Mill.
As it goes across Abel Lake, you know, that's essentially the area. Those homes around...
I was only putting it because of the Margaret, you know, trying to...
Well, you may wanna talk with them. I, when we were redistricting for Mountain View, I actually had a neighborhood that asked to be moved out of Forge and into Mountain View because of feeder patterns, and the school board, you know, moved, moved it.
Will you move one-forty-five at all? Where's one-forty-five?
Bridge Church, which has a direct, direct shot to, um...
The only problem is it really creates a island there that...
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely look at others.
You know, I mean, I know everybody talks about their established neighborhoods. These don't look like established, but they are. They have been there a long time. They may not have the catchy names, but they, these are still neighborhoods that have been there a long time.
Right, yeah.
That I, you know, still need to be sensitive to.
To themselves for a very long time.
Right. I can, and I can honestly say, you know...
Well, we can say that about one-seventeen, too.
All of them.
I mean, one-seventeen's been there. I remember when they built those houses. That was back in the late eighties, early nineties.
Does anyone else have any, I'm sorry?
I, no, I'd like to see one, Mr. Conley, this is not meant, it's more for me to see, I know, numbers, because I like to see full numbers, because when, I have had several people suggest options to me that I, I thought that the numbers would be high. I'm a visual person. Can we start in option seven, or whatever number we're on? And this may be just to see what something looks like. I would like to see, um, Embry Mill North and South with a, going to North, because I need to just see what that number would be. I think it's going to be a huge number, but we did that with Austin Ridge, and I have gotten several people suggesting that kind of option. The only way to be able to respond, in my opinion, is to see it, so, I am not suggesting it, but I think it's one we need to see, 'cause I, it has certainly been suggested to me as an option.
Okay, so we've made those changes to Emery Mill, South and North, to North Stafford. Option seven.
Okay, so that takes North to ninety-two.
It also creates, um, Austin Ridge, Westgate as a, I don't know if that is an island, considered an island.
The buses, for, for the buses, it's not.
That's correct.
Okay.
But for individuals who drive...
They'll still be going down to Courthouse Road, and, you know, that's the main artery that...
So, it's a little of both, 'cause I know when people drive, they, folks at Embry Mill have made that point, that Austin Ridge folks will go down and cut across.
They could cut across there where the restaurant is and pass the Aquatic Center.
The reason I need, I feel we need to see it, though, is many people spoke, I'm not saying it is right or wrong. This is the newer neighborhood, move them. I am not saying that is what we should do, but I felt, because that's what I've been getting several emails on, I needed to see, what does it do? So, it takes North to ninety-two and takes Forge down to ninety, and that's not moving any Mountain View. I get that. To Mountain View, I mean, and I know we would.
And that's on option seven?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's just one I had to feel like I had to throw out, because I've been, it's been suggested to me several times, so, I wanna make sure I'm hearing what we've been told. Is that even an option, or is that not? I mean, it's an entire neighborhood.
I mean, if, if you want dialogue, you're looking for...
Well, like I said, do we throw out some other, you know, some options that, some options that just try some different things, 'cause we seem to have in some of the current ones some uniformity. Is there, is there something else we need to see?
See why we need to.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's, if it's kinda...
Are you saying as far as keeping it or not keeping it? I mean, I would make the same case for those folks that are there.
I know.
You know, I mean, it...
I get it, I'm not advocating...
No, 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 I just, I mean, there's a difference between undeveloped and people who have been living there for a couple of years, but...
So... Okay, if there's not, that's fine. I just felt like, for the people who wrote me and said these numbers weren't, I had to be able to see it myself.
Well, right, and that's what I did, too.
Right, and they do, but if the, if the board is not willing to go there, then, you know, that's fine.
And that was the same with, with the Brook Point folks. I mean, a lot of people told me, look at it, look at it.
Right.
It, it doesn't work.
It doesn't not.
Five hundred kids to Brook Point. That's ninety-two at North.
Must be different.
What are you doing about Mountain View?
Right, well, we haven't put anybody in Mountain View, so that's...
We have to take...
Okay. I bet you we're gonna put one-seventeen.
I was just gonna say, we're probably gonna go one-seventeen.
Of course, let me state for the record that is an established subdivision with five students. Overall, it's not gonna make any difference in any student enrollment.
No, it doesn't.
So, if we are, you know, I, I would like to...
Right, I know.
Touch base.
Doing the same thing, I know.
So, um, one-seventeen to Mountain View is the same, one-forty-two in, in the entirety of one-forty-three wanna be considered?
Yes, and then I guess keep out the one-eighty-seven because of your comment about the driving patterns, even though that's about twenty students or twenty-four students, as I recall.
It's fourteen, really.
Fourteen, oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's it.
Well, you might want to touch base with them and see if they even have a preference.
I will, I mean.
Is that, are those your people or yours?
Mine.
Isn't that mine?
It still keeps Mountain View low.
I don't even know what option we're on right now.
Seven.
Seven.
Lucky seven.
Drink that coffee, would you?
Yeah. And what have you done so far, 117 and?
143, 142.
Is this, this isn't?
I think.
Did we take out 166?
No, it did not include Autumn Ridge. It was 166.
No, not Autumn Ridge. North and South Embry Mill.
Yes, option seven includes both of those.
Okay, so we're still on seven, north?
Yes, sir.
Like I said, I'm just trying to put out some of the options that we've heard. I'm not saying, not advocating for them, but when, you know, people always say, did you read my email? I read your email. I heard you wanted me to see what that looked like, so.
Got good at reading.
I'm looking at it so that we can see it.
So 166, north and south, and then 117?
So the challenge there is Mountain View still remains low.
163, both of them. Except for Liberty Villas.
Do we need what, two more, 2% more in Mountain View?
Yeah, 2% to 3%.
The board should be aware of a subdivision that is going to be approved here, or at least we think it's going to be approved, that borders North Stafford and part of Colonial Forge. And it's going to bring some additional students into the Colonial Forge subdivision.
Is this a by right or?
No, it is a rezoning. So I don't know if it'll be approved, but.
And we have several, the townhomes that were approved on February 7th, that was 48 townhomes at the back of Colonial Forge Woodcutter, so.
So we can address it as it comes, if the board wants to, when they get it approved, if the board wants to weigh in and do spot redistricting, you know, before that occurs, we can take that approach, you know, in the future, or consider it, at least.
Mr. Herring, can we, and when we get those approvals, as soon as you get either notification or if you and Mr. Harvey have set up something for that moment, there is something approved or even by right development that they find out about? Some of the by right development, at least in my neighborhood, it's not five homes, it can be like 20.
50.
It could, but in Hartwood, it's more like 20. But we've got two or three, Mr. McCosker talked about that day, driving down Hartwood Road. He said, wow, what happened? And that's by right. When you get notice of those, somehow we can get some communication system to the, to the board of maybe, and, you know, that's a do-out for the future, but, like you said, as it keeps populating, maybe we can try and get ahead.
Yeah, and, and when you get the approvals, and I know I've asked this question before and I forgot what the answer was, so I'm going to ask it again. When you get notification that these approvals have been made or given, how are we determining what attendance zone that development is going into?
They're already in an attendance zone, by virtue of where that land mass is. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so how do we reverse that?
Well, we don't. We have, we have an attendance zone established.
It's just like a geographical district.
That's right.
So if it's, if it's smack dab between North Stafford and Colonial Forge?
Well, there's.
Is making the determination what side of the street that's.
Well, we have already made a determination by establishing the attendance zone.
There's a boundary.
There's a boundary to that attendance zone.
So how do we change that?
Well, you change it as a part of a redistricting effort. Now, if you want to try to do it in a smaller, as you, as these things occur, and you want to consider it as a board, superintendent has some authority to do spot redistricting to a certain amount, and if it affects less than a certain amount of students, I'm not sure how you interpret that with a new development that has zero students.
If it's zero students.
So.
Maybe we could look at that policy.
So the board could work with the superintendent on that.
Yes.
Or the board could take up the issue after staff makes, makes them aware of a development that's been approved, that there may be some value in considering it to be redistricted out of the current attendance zone.
And what brought that to, you know, my topic of discussion was this whole Shelton Woods thing. Shelton Woods should have been, in my opinion, should have been zoned to North Stafford.
Yeah, but that was a supervisor who directed where it goes. So one of the things we could do as a board is make a resolution requesting that the planning department at the county add attendance zone to part of their criteria as they're determined, so it's at least listed somewhere during the planning commission review and then, or a supervisor review. So at least there's some visibility on it.
Right.
I do believe they ask what schools, the students would attend from a certain development, so they know the schools. And I do know the planning commissioners consider that. They, they ask a lot of pointed questions about, you know, what is the enrollment at a certain elementary or middle, you know, that impacts.
Sterling, I mean, Shelton, or whatever that one is.
Shelton Woods.
Yeah.
Sterling Woods.
(laughing). It was, it was directed wherever it's going to go, and, and we did. We, I think both Holly and I, we're both still on the planning commission, and we both asked that question.
So, so the bottom line is, I want us to be able to have a little bit more autonomy when it comes to deciding where a development is going to go to school, based on.
Earlier on in the process, and not just wait, yes, ma'am. Because all the land, all the land in the division is broken up into our attendance areas, whether it be elementary, middle, and high school.
That needs to change.
So, so when we know there's something coming into that, if it's something that's against what the board may feel they want to make a change, then we'll need to bring that to your attention sooner than later.
Right, I mean, because this is basically, we're chasing our tail here. So if we can do a redistricting before the kids get here.
That's different.
I mean.
Right.
Problem solved, we don't have to do this again.
That's different than what you said, so that's.
Well, we'll look at that as a policy that we can bring to the board for us to discuss. How about that?
Yeah, right.
How's that a, not a kick the can, but just a, let's do that separately.
Right.
Is there any reason, or do we want to throw out number seven? I'm okay with it, I'm just trying to, trying to find out what we want to do. If we're done and you want to go with six, I can live with that. I just felt like, again, that was one that was suggested.
Can I just, so number seven is 166, north and south Embry Mill. 117, 142, 143? Am I missing anything else?
I mean, in that one, we move some kids out of Forge in the near term, which is something to think about. I'm not saying that that has to, but it does go to our issue of how long can we have Forge in our, you know, at that capacity? Is there anybody else to add to Mountain View in this one? And then we could leave it, then let's review the options, see if we want to push any out, and, unless there's more. I think everybody looks pretty done.
What would it, what does this look like if we don't include South Embry Mill? Is that six?
I believe that's another option that we've listed.
I think it's different.
Chris, the reason I was bringing this is keeping that neighborhood together and all going to North.
No, that's option two.
So that we got one showing full Embry Mill moving, because I have been asked that question beyond.
Okay, so let's leave that.
Doesn't mean it's going to go anywhere.
Let's leave that. Okay, option seven, fine, it's the same as option two, but it includes all of Embry Mill instead of just the, the.
So, okay, so, so then two is, I know, I'm that guy.
Here. You could just copy my.
Give me your notes.
See, Jamie wrote them down.
I did, too, but mine's really.
Look at them, they're impeccable.
They have flowers and hearts.
Kind of.
I didn't say that.
Oh, Dwayne, your notes.
They're about to have flowers and hearts if we have to sit in here any longer, because I'm getting bored.
Okay, so I guess.
So, oh, I see, you got them by school, okay.
Okay, so then, do you want to just leave this one as, as is? Remembering, these are options that we start with, I, I think we all, not tonight, once we get the information on these pushed forward, we may, as Ms. Healy said very well at her town hall, it's not over till it's over. These are our talking points, and you usually probably say it better than me. As we know, these are options, they can change, but they are good, I think, places to start. Are there any, I am somewhat like Ms. Healy, I think the option one is too many, but I am willing to keep it, it's up to you all. I don't want to speak.
Well, let's, let's keep it. This is not the end of all ends, there's, there's no problem with having an option.
Okay.
If you don't mind me saying so.
No, I'm lucky number seven.
Well, I think we should think about, though, are we willing to move 500 students? Because if we're not willing to move that many students, then that needs to be made known to the public, because every one of these options creates concern, hardship, whatever, for.
Well, out of that 500, out of that 500, are we talking about the 215 that are in North Embry Mill?
Yes, yes.
So then we're not really moving 500 students?
Correct.
Thank you.
So.
So what's, what's the problem?
Was it in there? No.
No, I'm sorry, option one is not, I'm sorry.
Option one was not.
It's not in there at all.
It's, it's 500 real current students.
Okay, so that's option one.
Yeah.
So, which, which was the next one that had Embry Mill in it?
No, I think we were trying to, I had thrown out, if we weren't willing to move 500 kids, would we want to eliminate option one as one we push forward? But I'm good, I was trying to narrow the pool.
I don't want to remove.
Okay, then let's, then let's leave it.
No, I don't want to remove it.
Okay. Now, so, does everybody feel comfortable that these are options we would like additional, not worked, descriptions? I'm not sure, what am I looking, what am I looking to be saying?
Well, we'll go ahead and we'll produce maps, so you can visually see these. We'll show them along with the data.
Right.
Each option presented, and then we'll do some pros and cons. We'll get transportation to review it.
That was my next question.
To see if there's any negative impact on transportation, such as you're driving through an attendance area, those type of things.
Right.
And we'll try to capture all those pros and cons, and then we'll get that to you. And so I would recommend that the board look at all that data together and then decide if they want to go forward with all those options, or to skinny, skinny it down, or to tweak some of the options based on the information we give.
Perfect.
Okay, so, so you all will be needing.
Also give the information about.
On the hundred, yes, yes, ma'am.
Well, not, not just in and out. And the impact on the school.
Yes, ma'am.
And also, I would like to add to that information on, maybe historically, how many transfers into Mountain View do we have for the IB program? Because I think that's, that's a factor that affects Mountain View that would not have an impact on, you know, North or Forge. Because they're, they wouldn't be counted in these, these counts, would they, if someone transfers in from, say, another district into Mountain View?
The current transfers, the current transfers are counted.
Right, but in your projections.
That's right.
Do your projections include any transfers into Mountain View to be in the IB program?
Not in the year 2020.
Okay, so that's why I'm just asking, I'd like to get some historical data on how many transfers in. If it's, if it's a dozen, that's not going to have an impact, but if it's.
But we know, there, there could be a trend, ma'am, and we could try to give you that, so you can kind of consider.
Well, you want to, you want to know what, what the delta is between who's going out as well, right?
Yes.
That's a whole different, well, see, the transfers in the Mountain View for IB would not in, be in the in and out. The in and out are just in for programs, and that's going to be because we bus them. The transfers for IB would be where the family provides transportation.
Gotcha.
For the student, and when we're projecting students, these are only students in the attendance zone, so these would be out of the attendance zone that are coming in.
Gotcha, okay.
I know we can't predict it, but we can look at the historical data.
Yes, we can.
And, and I don't know those numbers, so they may not be significant, but then again, they may be, and I want to just have that when we're looking at these total numbers of movement.
Before everybody runs, go ahead.
There's one more to add, and this is that one, and this can be added, I think, to all the options. Dwayne, you want to listen to this one?
Okay.
APU 124, it's Centerport Parkway, they go to Drew. It makes sense for those kids, go ahead and go to Stafford. I know Barry provided an opinion on that as well. It's.
It's Dr. High School?
Three or five kids now.
Oh, there are.
And it's, it's projected to 15 kids 2020, so it's not a major impact.
Gotcha.
It's, that's really just a fix, since we have it open.
Did you say 124?
124.
From Drew Middle School?
Centerport, yeah.
Yeah. Are they currently going to Forge?
Yeah, they're, they're only kids from Drew that go to Forge.
Oh, my goodness.
So you're proposing.
Right now, I think there's two.
You're proposing APU 124, Lake Estates, to go to Stafford High School?
Yeah.
That's, they're estimating.
Across the board.
On all scenarios.
And they're estimating 15?
Yeah, in 2020.
Well, yeah, they're, no, that's your constituents.
That area.
There is.
But by the time that comes, we're talking about breaking ground, opening.
That's fine, that's taken them on a board.
No, I.
If they want to go, if they want to go, good.
I have no issue.
I don't know if they want to.
Yeah, Scott and I had talked about this, we forgot.
It's low impact, and I know at least one kid had, had concern that he was the only one going to Forge one year.
Right.
Right, okay, yeah, no, I have no issues.
No, I know also, as we talk about these smaller numbers, if we're going to pursue a sibling policy, these smaller numbers make a difference. Yeah. So.
Well, and, and the nice thing is, is we did talk to Mr. Suddeth, this, this is an area, they do go to Margaret Brent, so take good care of them over at Drew. And there is some proposed development coming there, I agree with Mr. Hirons. Remember, this is one of those targeted growth areas that sits within the Colonial Forge one and the Centerport one, so there could be growth coming there. It's trying to get, and we can't predict ahead of some of that growth, and, but when you see Drew, it, it really is sort of a standout, and Mr. Hirons and I talked about And Mr. Hirons and I had talked about that, let's do the best for kids.
No problem. Now, can, can we make sure that when these options are put forth, that they're put forth, that they're in no particular priority order?
Right, right, just their options.
These are just options. Why don't we just give, I mean, give them letters, I don't know.
A B and C.
I just don't want people to think that this is the number one, option number two. These are all options that are under consideration.
Or colors or something.
And, you know, people don't have to, to vote among these options. They can even say, "How about making this change," or whatever, for purposes of the, the public comment, you know, at, at, at the hearing. Because it's likely, unlikely, who knows, that one of these options would even end up being the result. And can we also put forth for the public hearing that we are considering siblings? As you began our meeting, the allowing siblings of current, meaning this school year, Forge students to attend? And, and I don't know that we can commit a future board, but we could certainly, you know, say it's the desire that they be there until the, a new high school is open.
And the reason I make that is because I think at that point grandfathering will, we have heard from the community, we're going to then look at that whole map, and then if you do grandfathering, I, I have to tell you what a mess that would be, as if you're grandfathering to an old school, but oh, now you're not going there, and.
But you're only talking, just so I understand, you're only talking current students and their siblings? It's not like every student coming through their, way of my.
Well, we just have to be careful, that I do know that's going to add students that we might have been counting on to move. I'm, I just felt like it was something I heard, and my thought would be, if we wanted to consider it, that would be my way of looking at it, of saying, until that new high school comes, we will consider the transfers.
Would, would a sibling policy be attached to each option? Or it'd be across the board, or would option one, three, six, and seven have sibling in two, four, nine?
I'd like to see us consider it across the board. I mean, I don't think there's any reason to consider it with one option versus another, because it's, it's really a family, a family issue.
The issue is, we're not going to know those numbers.
That's right.
You know, we're going to have no idea.
We don't know these numbers for.
Right, but I'm, but I'm, I do think, though, there can be potentially, if we pursued that, some kind of reach out to current parents who are doing siblings for planning purposes. Okay, how big's your family?
No, we don't know how long they're going to live there.
I want to limit to siblings that are going to be in the school with the current student.
Exactly.
Because if we did it, like, I have a 10th grader and a 15th grader and a 2nd grader.
Right, that doesn't count.
That's what you get into, you're right.
And it's laborious for staff, I mean.
But that's what I meant when I said for a number of years.
We have to, we just have to figure out what's smart.
All, all I said is, I wanted us to consider, and I, well, I know Dr. Benson heard it. We, he can come back and say, "This is an administrative nightmare, it's not possible," whatever it might be. I just felt, after hearing some of the people I've talked to, I at least am willing to rethink it, is all, is really what, what I'm saying. Am I hearing from the board members that you do not want to meet again next week to go over or whittle or do anything to these options? These will be the ones we will be taking to public hearing on March 1st? Is that correct? I'm just.
I mean, I, I'm comfortable that as long as we have time to review it before it gets released to the public, which, you know, suggests, yeah, I am.
I wanted to make one point too, when in the previous redistricting, we offered the kids that they can stay at their current school or they can go to the new school, and it's usually about half and half. So, some of those 10th, 11th, and 12th graders.
Correct, that's true.
Are going, and with the transportation issue of the 10th graders not driving, they're probably going to go to the, the new redistricted school by bus. Those numbers will be in there.
That's a good point, so something for us to, to remember. Because if so, then I will not have a meeting noticed for anybody next week regarding this issue, at least. Is there anything?
Can you clarify what we're going to put forth for the public to know that we're considering with respect to siblings? I, I just want to be clear, so I can respond to people as well.
My option was that I thought the board should, or could consider a sibling policy. I had originally thrown out the high school, I, I understand, Mr., I would really like to get some clarification from Dr. Benson. Unfortunately, you know, on administrative, because I also don't want it, that we have to hire another person to manage that program or something, that, I, I do want to be cautious of that. But I would like to give him some chance to, to think on it, because I really didn't give him much notice that I was going to say this tonight, because, but I really, I have to tell you, that's something I've really thought hard on.
All right, so we can say that we are considering extending the sibling policy?
To be TBD, to be determined how.
Considering.
Considering siblings.
Considering.
That's right.
Yeah, and I think that's fair, because I'd like to have staff give us.
And, and then we can receive comments on, you know, how far.
Correct.